Okay, I have at 7:15, we'll call this meeting to order. I'll ask our county administrator, Mr. Craig Meadows, if he will lead us in a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
If you're able, let's rise for a moment of silence. I'd also ask during that moment of silence that you remember the family of Jim Politis. Jim is a former board member and was chair of the board for a couple of terms. Jim passed away yesterday, so please remember his family as you have a moment of silence, and then I'll lead us in the pledge.
Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Presentations, the next thing is the Virginia Department of Transportation. Unfortunately, Mr. Clark will not be able to be here this evening, so we will move on to our public hearings. The first...
I'd like to say something before we get started, and Marty, you please stop me if I'm in the wrong, please. I emailed all y'all last week about this MOA and asked for it to be taken off the agenda until the volunteer rescue fire could be here. We all know that this week was fire prevention week. Majority of them is a fire parade. Then today, we added the fire department to this agenda. I think that's a little disrespectful to do it right before the meeting that evening, and I would ask the majority of this board if we could put this off to our next meeting out of respect for the volunteers in case some of them wanted to come and speak. I'd like to hear other board members' comments, please.
I can support that.
Yeah, I also support that.
Are you talking about taking the work session off too, or just the part under new business?
I disagree with the work session. I mean, I think we should move forward on the work session, and then if we need to... This was on the agenda the last board meeting and got deferred because of logistics with electronic participation, and then at that meeting, we said it would be on this meeting. The adding of the fire part, that was part of the original... I think we had some questions, Marty, about the original, on the original agenda. Was it for fire and EMS? We need two resolutions, or could it be combined? So it was not...
Yeah, the MOA that you had was the one I drafted as kind of like the one that would apply for EMS agencies, and then the one for fire, it's the same, other than there's one difference with training for driving, because I think the one that's in the EMS one applies to ambulances, and then the... It's my understanding that the one we put in fire would apply to those who drive, you know, the bigger fire trucks, so that's the only difference in the two.
I support having the work session but not voting tonight, so that the public can speak tonight, or the next time, actually.
For public address?
Yeah.
I definitely want to continue on with the work session. We've been discussing these items for over two years with the Fire Board Services, and these issues that have come up, not necessarily the MOA two years ago, but as we started looking into the concerns and issues and planning a comprehensive plan to plan for the future. This is something that I think Mike O'Garry sent out to the chiefs and captains, if I'm not mistaken, the topics that would be on the MOA, and the actual resolution, none of us saw until the agenda was posted. Am I correct on that?
It wasn't added until today, the fire part, right?
Yes, but, you know, the whole MOA is supposed to be for volunteers, whether they're fire or EMS. I don't know why we would ever want to separate the two. Both MOAs are identical except for three words, so, I mean, it's about volunteers, it's not really about anything else. And, you know, we're kind of taking on this air of, this is something horrible, that everybody must come and give their opinion. We love to hear your opinion, but this is housekeeping. This MOA, you all read it, right?
I think that...
I mean, I don't want to get into discussing it till the work session, but I am definitely in favor of, let's discuss it tonight, because there's several things on it that, to me, the way they're worded is kind of confusing, but I'm good with letting it go till the next meeting to actually vote on it, but I definitely think it's on the agenda, we've kicked it around, we need to talk about it. It's something that we probably should have done a year ago, so I don't see no reason to wait if we're just going to talk about it.
I think a good compromise from what I'm hearing everyone say would be to talk about it under the work session but not to vote on it, sort of like when we have, like, something that comes from planning and we have a public hearing, and then sometimes we vote on it that night, but sometimes we don't, and since we do have the fire, the parade and everything going on, and in case there are some folks that want to come, I think that would be a good compromise, and we could put it on the agenda for the next meeting to vote on, but have our discussion tonight, because who knows, we might come up with some things, like you're saying, Steve, that might be a little confusing that we want to get straightened out, like, what do you think?
I was going to say, the work session, I think we need to have this discussion. We've had several EMS fire work sessions and back and forth, so I think this, for the work session, for the MOA definitely needs to happen. We keep, you know, pushing it off and pushing it off. The other thing is that if there was concern about, and I understand tonight's the fire parade for fire prevention, that if it was a concern about the fire side, maybe we're ready to move with the EMS side.
I'm okay with that.
And I also like the idea that, because we've changed the date of the fire and EMS commission, so that we can meet and discuss also, so...
Is that on... When do y'all meet?
That's been... We're meeting on a different night, it's going to be on Monday.
Move to Monday the 16th.
Okay, so that would be good for that.
Yeah, so we'll get that in too, before we ever vote on it, so...
So I'm hearing consensus to continue with the work session, and then a possible vote for just the EMS side, since the fire, there's an issue about the fire, and then do the separate fire at the next board meeting?
Well, it sounded like what Steve was saying, that since the commission was going to meet on Monday, they sort of look at all of that, right? EMS and fire, is that...
Yeah, yeah.
Is that what you were saying?
Well, it's my understanding that Fire and Rescue Commission has not even discussed this yet, right?
Right.
Discuss the actual draft, or you mean discuss all the topics and issues that we've already requested? Well, we haven't even discussed the draft, so...
But now, we have discussed on the commission some of the topics to it, but again, in my reading of both of them, the three words difference, it's a housekeeping thing. I don't even see how it would affect the rank and file. It really is more for the leadership positions, as far as any of the requirements that are in the MOA, but we're going to talk about that.
In past meetings, we agreed to move forward with these MOAs. I think that the EMS can move all the way forward, having the, whatever commission you're talking, that you're on, Steve, Fire and Rescue Commission, talk on Monday. We already knew that that wasn't going to happen until after we voted. We were planning on moving forward, but the fact that the fire MOA wasn't on the agenda until today, I know people do plan on coming here to speak to us supervisors, even though there might not be public hearing or public address about the, you know, the topic. And we're trying to preserve and create a more cooperative environment through this whole process, so I would encourage us to, you know, be sensitive to that and do, you know, rescue now if we want, and then fire, vote next time.
My opinion is different than that, and while I appreciate trying to reach a consensus or a cooperative agreement here, I walked in hearing the fire parade, and it makes me sad that they're here. They should be there, and I don't see any reason that we can't delay the work session and the votes for a couple of weeks. If we continue forward with the work session tonight, that's fine. I don't think we should be voting on either of them tonight.
Supervisor Shepard?
I kind of agree with April. I wouldn't mind putting it all off, but if you want to do the work session, I guess that's okay, not vote on them.
All right, so I think we have board, correct me, to move forward with the work session and move the two items to vote at the next board meeting, which would be October the 20... October the 23rd, and so if we could also maybe make sure that everyone has communicated on that, I mean, through Fire and Rescue and the chiefs and captains, to make sure that there's clear communication.
And then, here's a question. Steve, can you let us know anything that pops up at y'all's meeting?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we probably need a motion and a second, and then a vote, just to move items D and E from new business off tonight's agenda to be placed on the next meeting's agenda.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second to move those two items for the resolution of the MOA for fire and EMS to October the 23rd. Madam Clerk, any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Ms. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye, but I think we still need to cancel all of it.
Ms. Fritschowski?
Aye.
Chair Blavens?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Okay, all right, moving ahead, public hearing, amend ordinance tax relief for the elderly and handicapped. Do you have any... Is the county doing any presentation?
There isn't. We've previously presented this information to the board, and the reason for the public hearing this evening is to see if there are any comments from the public regarding what's been proposed for the tax relief and deferrals for elderly and handicapped.
Okay, I do not have anyone signed up, but if any citizen would like to come forward to address this public hearing on the ordinance for the tax exemption for elderly and handicapped, you have four minutes to address the board. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that public hearing. The next, amend ordinance for the cost reimbursement for emergency medical transport.
I guess I could say a couple of words. We're amending the current ordinance to change the way that this will be billed, and it's going to be divided, it's going to be, it's going to depend on whether you're a county resident or a non-resident, and that's something we have to comply with under federal law. We can make sure that county residents are not billed, and the reason we can do that is because we have language in there that county residents pay taxes, and so that money, the money that they're paying in other taxes, we can say goes toward that, those costs. You cannot say the same thing for non-residents, and so non-residents who end up being transported in the county ambulance will get billed. Now, the county can still have compassionate billing, but we do have to send them a bill. And so that's basically how the ordinance now reads.
All right. I do not have anyone signed up for this public hearing, but if any citizen would like to come forward...
You cannot say the same thing for non-residents. And so non-residents who end up being transported in the county ambulance will get billed. Now, the county can still have compassionate billing, but we do have to send them a bill. And so that's what, that's basically how the ordinance now reads.
All right. I do not have anyone signed up for this public hearing, but if any citizen would like to come forward, they have four minutes to address the board on the, amend the ordinance for cost reimbursement for emergency medical transport. Seeing no one come forward, we'll-
I got a quick question from Marty.
Yes, sir.
If somebody lives in the county and visitors from out of town comes and stays with them and they have to call a ambulance, or is them people going to get charged?
It's whoever's transported will get charged. And so, you know, they'll, they'll, we'll, you know, we'll use insurance if they have insurance, you know, they'll go through there first. But yeah, it's whoever's transported.
But, but they won't receive a bill from us, right?
The, if, if they're a non-resident, they, they will, if they're, and there's amount that hasn't been covered by insurance, they will get a bill.
But that's still soft billing?
Correct, right, yeah.
No one else, we'll close that public hearing. All right. Next public hearing, amend 2025 comprehensive plan, adopt transportation matters plan.
Justin's here this evening to walk us through that. Thank you, Justin.
Good evening, everyone. It's really nice to be with you again. I am very excited to share with you the culmination of two years' worth of work by staff and our consultants for Montgomery County's first ever standalone transportation plan. So transportation matters is really two plans in one. It is a standalone transportation plan, again, the first that the county's ever done as our, our own entity, but it also serves as an extension of our comprehensive plan. And pending the action of the board this evening, that would be adopted as part of our existing 2025 comprehensive plan and then carried forward to the new comprehensive plan, which staff will begin working on in 2024. So the purpose of the plan is really to evaluate transportation improvements based on a variety of different factors. We looked at a number of prior studies that have been done by the county and other organizations to really ensure that we were continuing forward the efforts that have already been done. But we also really wanted to get public input on this plan. We have citizens that are on these roads every single day, so we wanted to get feedback from the public as to what they wanted to see in the next 20 years in terms of transportation infrastructure here in the county. We looked at the transportation plan through a lens of the county's overall development vision. We wanted to ensure that what we were proposing in the plan aligned with what we saw in terms of economic development and housing goals in the county to ensure that we were supporting all these efforts across the board. And lastly, we really did a deep dive into the different data that was available, both through the Virginia Department of Transportation and then those other studies, to ensure that we were addressing those needs in a data-driven way. So the goal of the plan ultimately, again, is to support the county's overall development vision, but also be consistent with plans at the statewide level as well as other regional transportation efforts that have been adopted. So we're not in this alone. As the county, we have a number of key actors that are working on transportation issues here regionally. That includes the New River Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, of which we are a member. Also included in that group are representatives from the two towns, Virginia Tech, the city of Radford, and Pulaski County. One actor that's not mentioned here, we are also part of the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Transportation Planning Organization. The, the eastern portions of the county are part of that organization as well, and they also had input. We also work very closely with the Regional Commission on all transportation projects here in the region, as well as our contacts in the VDOT Salem District Office. We also looked at the available funding revenues that are available, Smart Scale, the Highway Safety Improvements Program, and other funding sources that are out there to help us achieve our transportation goals. So what the plan does is it really does set forward some goals for our transportation future here in the county, and they're listed here for you. I'll touch on those briefly. Obviously, a major goal is improving safety here in the county, but we also want to look at congestion, how long it takes folks to get from point A to point B here in the county. But we also want to look at transportation, not just as vehicular traffic. We want to look at multimodal solutions. So this is everything from sidewalks and bike lanes to public transportation as well. Another goal that the plan outlines is connectivity. You hear this a lot when we bring planning applications to you. We really want to plan for those future connections as the county continues to develop in terms of residential development. We want to ensure that our neighborhoods are connected, but we also want to ensure that those neighborhoods are connected to the services that they're going to need in the future. And a major driver is obviously remaining economically competitive in the county, making sure that we are putting in the infrastructure that's going to support our businesses that continue to generate tax revenue for the county. So another major element of this process was identifying specific projects and evaluating those projects using a defined set of criteria to determine how we were going to look at funding for those projects in the future. So as I mentioned, we did a pretty robust public engagement effort. This began back in 2021. It seems so long ago, but we held a public input meeting in November of 2021 and at the same time launched a website and online survey. This allowed our citizens to really identify problem areas in the county. All of these dots that you see here are areas that were identified, projects that were identified that our citizens felt were important to elevate to the top of the conversation. That was done through interactive mapping, questions, and then also the opportunity for people to submit photographs as part of that public engagement process. After we received that initial input, we held another meeting last year, almost a year ago, where we reviewed those draft recommendations with our citizens. We had a great turnout. We jokingly said we went to the second page for a sign-in sheet, which is unheard of for planning projects. But we were really glad to get that feedback from the community to ensure that we got this right, that we addressed the issues that they had brought forward a year prior to address in the plan. And then we really started to analyze those projects and that data with a focus on, again, those county development goals and our land use vision. As you all know, we planned for 80% of our growth to happen within the two towns and our village areas. So ensuring that that growth is supported through our transportation projects was a major focus of the plan. We also want to make sure that our transportation projects are helping us maintain that traditional neighborhood character that our citizens have said they want to see in new development as our villages and the towns develop. But we also want to be sure that we're preserving our rural lands and that rural character of the county that our citizens also identify as a major reason that they love living here. So again, those five criteria that we use to analyze those needs. So looking again at safety, we're talking about crash severity and frequency, but also roadway conditions. So those are things like lighting improvements, speed reductions, things of that nature. Relieving congestion, and that's measured through time travel, travel time, not time travel. Travel time, and that's done through the VTран system, which is a program that's operated through VDOT. Again, looking at multi, multimodal travel, understanding that not all of our citizens are moving around in the county in their personal automobile. Again, connectivity, looking at those growth areas, which are in our villages, and then the boundaries that are outside the two towns, but also looking at corridors of statewide significance to, again, to ensure that we're being compliant with what the state is doing in terms of transportation planning. And again, economic competitiveness, one major factor that was evaluated there, we have a lot of trucks that go through the county, both on Interstate 81 and our other corridors. So ensuring that freight and other economic drivers are being able to be moved through the region quickly and efficiently. And then also looking at equity. Not every community is going to have the same needs within the county as other communities. So we really want to make sure that when we're evaluating projects, that we're looking at this at an equal footing all across the county. So one great thing that this plan does is it helps us to prioritize projects. And we all have projects that we think need to be at the top of the list, but we really wanted this, this project to be one that would help us evaluate these projects objectively and help us really to determine not just what projects are important, but what projects are we actually going to be able to complete in the near future. And that was done by looking at those prior studies, taking into account our public comments, and then analyzing the individual projects to identify that priority list. So after we looked at that large list of projects, we really looked at three different evaluation criteria when determining where they were going to exist on that priority list. So looking at that land use coordination, how well they support the goals of the county, how many transportation needs are addressed by the project, and in a lot of these projects, we can address multiple criteria in one project. And really, the other important factor was the ease of implementation. We all know that there are projects in the county that would be transformational for the county, but they're not going to be very easy to implement, either because of resources, dollars, or time. So the consultants, Clark Nixon and EPRPC, they worked with us on this project and they helped us to really develop a rating system for these projects, where projects were received, received a high, medium, or low rating in each of those evaluation criteria. If it received a high rating, it received three points. Medium ratings received two, and then low ratings received one. And then based on those ratings, a tier structure was developed and you can see those ranges there on tier one, two, three, and four projects. And I do want to clarify, just because something is a tier four doesn't mean it's not an important project. It just means that it scored lower when we evaluated it with those metrics. And it's entirely possible that tier three and four projects may get achieved before a one or two-tier project. So looking at our roadway projects, I'm not going to go through the individual projects that are listed in the plan, but I did want to show you sort of those matrices that have been established on how those tiers are there. You can see the project is identified, the bounds of the project, what the project description is, and then how it ranked on those three evaluation criteria. And that was done for all of the projects that were identified. The other great thing about this plan is it's not static. These will be changing over time. We will be reevaluating these projects. You know, there's already projects here, the turn lane improvements on Reiner Road, those are already in the works. So as projects come off the list, we'll add new projects to the list using those evaluation criteria that have been provided to us by the consultants. So we're glad to see some of these projects already coming off the list, and we're really excited as we go forward for funding opportunities through Smart Scale and H-SIP and other funding projects, that we have this to help us to prioritize those projects as we go for funding. Here are our tier three and tier four projects for roadways. And then we break out multimodal projects as well. Again, these are sidewalk improvements, bike lanes, public transit, to really help us to evaluate these. And again, as these are part of a larger picture for transportation planning, there are several multimodal projects that are identified on this list that are within our study that we're currently doing on Pepper's Ferry Road. So we're, we're really excited about how all of these different sources are going to be working together to push us forward, to see some real projects happening here in the county. Then there's some other things that didn't necessarily fall in either of the other buckets. So there are some improvements here and recommendations that we can go forward with when we're looking at collaborative efforts with the region, looking at the potential of another rest area on Interstate 81, the Valley to Valley Trail, which we've talked about a lot lately, looking at specific investments for bicycle and pedestrian facilities in our villages, and then other transit connections. So really looking at being able to expand public transit into our village areas. These are all things that are currently in the works by staff, working with our regional The plan also gives us other strategies and solutions that are included in Chapter Eight. It gives us some implementation programs and recommendations on how to actually get these projects across the finish line in Chapter 11. And then each project has its own profile sheet that is included in an appendix. That's going to be very helpful for staff when we go for a funding application. We have all that information in one place, so it makes our jobs a bit easier convincing the folks in Richmond that we need to fund these projects. So just a summation of the public input that's been done on this plan. We had an initial public open house, again, in November of 2021, with that need survey going out to our citizens, with our second open house being held in September of last year. We held a joint work session with you and the Planning Commission in June of this year. The work session for the Planning Commission was held in August, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing last month on the plan. At that public hearing, the Planning Commission voted unanimously for those in attendance eight to zero to recommend adoption of the plan and integration into the comprehensive plan, and we had no members of the public that spoke at that public hearing. But again, we did get a lot of public feedback at our open houses. So with that, I will take any questions that you have. Bree is also here if there's a question that I can't answer, so I'll be glad to take those questions at this time.
Thank you, Justin. We'll start off around the room. Supervisor Demonts.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I know that this is a long process and I love seeing you here approaching the end. A couple of questions that may not be totally related, but just of interest. In the multimodal goal, does rail factor in at all, either for freight or passengers? Does that?
It, it does factor in in that we cover it within the plan, but again, because the station is going to be in the jurisdiction of the town of Christiansburg, we didn't look at it specifically in terms of those impacts. However, throughout the plan, we do reference that the need for public transit and connections to get people to the station are going to be something critical for us to look forward in the future.
Great. I, I have heard a lot of comments from parents of Virginia Tech students, especially as they're looking at rail transport for their college students back to parents' homes, that the Smartway bus, which is wonderful, and I'm so happy that we have it, but it might have already been booked for Thanksgiving, and so some Virginia Tech parents are worried about how they're going to get their students home. And so I'm glad to hear that that's at least a factor in the plan.
I will, I'm sorry. I will add that, again, working collaboratively with members of the region, our staff sits on the, the current strategic planning effort for Radford Transit. I mean, we also work very closely with Blacksburg Transit to ensure that those public transit entities are going to have connections to the station when it's built.
Great. That's awesome, and I'm glad that you gave me that information. That makes me happy. And then just kind of a question about how we're interfacing with other localities. So tonight on Blacksburg Town Council's agenda, they have an item where they're discussing study funding for the Prices Fork 460 interchange project. And it just struck me, we're talking about transportation, they're talking about transportation. How are we working together on some of those goals? And I think you've kind of illustrated some of the ways, but if there's any more information you have.
Yeah, we're very lucky that we are part of the MPO. That really is that channel of communication between the two towns, us and Virginia Tech, to ensure that we're really working collaboratively and the things that we're doing are not going to be in conflict with any of the plans of those other jurisdictions. But again, we also work with the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Planning Commission in, in their work to ensure that what we're doing is complementary and not contradictory to what they're doing.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear you say. So that's it. That's all I have. I'm really glad, and I really appreciate the work of our planning department on this. I think it's a guide for how we move in the future. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bowen.
Great job.
Thank you.
Just to speak to a couple of things that you brought up, April. Riding the train and the Smartway bus back from Roanoke, the Smartway bus actually got a second bus when it was a big holiday weekend for the students. So I was really impressed that on the fly, they were able to do that. You know, I think it all depends on who gets a train ticket, you know, and there's limited train tickets. But I'm so glad that this has come to fruition and hopefully it will help us get funding and stay vibrant. So I noticed the logo changed a little bit. Did it with a little road in one of those mountains? Is that new or did I miss that beginning, at the beginning?
It's the same logo. Yeah, we, we adopted the Montgomery Matters branding and we sort of used that as well when we did the transportation.
Nice, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
Supervisor Shepherd.
Thank you for the presentation, it's a lot of good information. I have one question, and it probably, I know it doesn't pertain to the funding probably for this, but is there any, or have you heard of any, or was there any talk of starting or completing the Parkway that goes down Price Mountain and connects to South Gate?
So there always is discussion about that project. You know, we primarily look at that as a research tool. The, you know, the right-of-way is owned all the way out, so hopefully in the future that will be developed. That was looked at, but again, because that really is outside of that 20-year planning effort, we didn't focus a whole lot on that, but... Bree, did you have anything you wanted to add on that?
Because I know there's been studies done, you know, as far as the traffic counts and where they're coming from, where they're going, that would be a big safety help for Prices Fork.
I agree.
Anyway, that's all I have.
Supervisor Fitchukowski.
And I guess Supervisor Shepherd, you're talking about the connector road, the one they call a connector road. Yeah. I didn't know there was right-of-way through there.
So there, we're currently, for the connector road, we're currently looking at environmental. There's a couple of different routes that have been proposed. Unfortunately, all of the routes have their issues. There's some protected wetlands in that area, there's some right-of-way that's been acquired already by the foundation. Again, that's going to be a collaborative effort between Virginia Tech, the town of Blacksburg, and us, but we continue to have those discussions, again, through the MPO.
The, I know, I think most of this study or report was done prior to the last couple of months when VDOT Now was talking about changes to SmartScale.
Right.
Because I know one of the issues with SmartScale is going to be the land use. They're going to be looking at that differently. So how much do you think that might affect?
So land use will still remain a factor in evaluating SmartScale applications, it's the time window that they're going to be looking at. Right now, we ultimately get punished in applications because we get development done quicker here in the county, and we miss that window where it can be counted as points toward our applications. So they are looking at how long they evaluate projects in terms of, is it two years, is it five years, is it 10 years? We have been in conversation with our representatives at VDOT, we provided a pretty robust list of comments to the folks that are evaluating the SmartScale program, but in talking with our consultant, we're pretty confident with the framework that we have going forward will still help us to score well in SmartScale even with the changes that are proposed.
I like the way this, this plan is laid out. It is very similar to what the TPO does in Roanoke. I just wish that we got the kind of money that the TPO gets to fund their projects, then we might see some quick movement on it, but it's very well laid out. I like the fact that you've already prepared everybody for adjustments, because there always is in transportation. I like the fact that you mentioned about the Tier 3 and 4, they might get funded, and it might just be because they're cheaper.
Right.
And so they can be done quicker, and a lot of, a lot of folks don't understand that, you know, especially, Darryl mentioned Prices Fork Road, which, yeah, would be wonderful to have a, essentially a bypass for Prices Fork Road and not use it as a connector to Pulaski County anymore, but, because that would greatly reduce the traffic on it, I'm sure, but the cost on building a new roads, which I have to say, when I travel south, I see a lot of new roads being built in other states, and I've always asked VDOT, how come we don't build any new roads? We just keep widening the ones we have.
Right.
But, you know, it all comes down to dollars and cents, I guess, but...
I will say that one result of this planning effort for us has been, we've identified a lot of sources of funding that really weren't on our radar before, and we're very lucky with our on-call transportation consultants, that we can identify those funding sources that are smaller pots of money.
Right.
But sometimes those smaller pots of money are exactly what we need to get a project done, and I think of, we're getting recreational access funds for the entrance at the Reiner Park, and that would not have been on our radar two years ago until we did this effort. So I'm hoping that we can continue to identify other sources of funding. Obviously, SmartScale is the big get, but we're going to be able to accomplish a lot of projects with other funding sources here in the county.
Yeah, we're trying to work on that now, trying to get the ears of our elected leaders and try to improve some of our road paving projects on our gravel roads and issues like that. I don't know how far we'll get with it, but we got to keep plugging away at it, because nothing's going to change if we don't, so. Excellent job on this, just very well done, I'm glad to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Supervisor King.
I have no question, but want to tell you, I appreciate you getting the citizens involved in all this, it really means a lot to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Well, you know, I'm excited because it all goes with planning for the future, and transportation is very much part of our infrastructure that we need to be thinking about, so I'm really glad to see this. And a note, at the League of Women Voters and AAACP candidates forum for board of supervisor members, this was a question that came up. So citizens are definitely engaged in this and asking, and of course, a lot of the ask, you know, like the thinking is like, well, when will we have, you know, transportation out from the towns into the county? And, you know, I like the idea of the villages, because when we did the comprehensive plan originally, and we put the villages in, that's where we wanted our growth to, you know, go out to, so I'm excited about this, and I think that you all did a great job. So a question, so when you look at the plan, do you come back to it every year and sort of look at the projects again and switch them around, or how does that work?
And as I said, these, these projects are going to fluctuate over time, we're going to complete a project, and it'll fall off, and that opens up a space that we can put another project on. At minimum, we'll be evaluating it every five years, that's in line with how often we're supposed to evaluate the comprehensive plan. But I imagine as we start checking these projects off the list, as we start identifying new funding sources, we're going to be seeing other projects that are going to bubble to the top of the list that we're going to be able to put in the pipeline.
Sort of like our comp plan, when we originally did that, we said we always wanted to have the ability to come back to it anytime, not just every five years, in case something needed to happen. So I'm really excited about this. It looks like a really complete study, and thank you for all the work.
Thank you. We had a lot of help, so thanks to our consultants as well.
Justin, again, this was excellent presentation for the master plan, and I was, I came to both of the open houses, and we had some citizen engagement, and questions were about bicycle-friendly lanes, especially there Bellevue Elementary School, and also a lot of questions about transit, extending the bus routes, and also, and just about two weeks ago, Supervisor Demont said question, talking over at Radford University, they're already talking about making sure for the rail that their transit, because they all realize that students are going to utilize that and make it accessible and easy for them. So I don't have any other questions, I see, I understand, and a lot of those were priorities are Route 114, Pepper's Ferry Road, that we commonly talk about all the times, all the time, but this is a great presentation, and again, for citizens to know that there will be adjustments and reevaluate, you know, reevaluations of things, and sometimes stuff will get funded because it's easier to do and can be done quicker, and there's enough funding to get that project knocked off versus something that might be a little bit more in detail and take longer time to implement.
Yes, ma'am. And that 114 corridor, we're going to be talking about that a lot in the next few years. Independent of this project, we've been working with the Office of Intermoto Planning and Investment on a study along the 114 corridor. We had over 700 citizen responses on that survey, and we've met with the folks from VDOT a couple of different times now, and actually looking at projects that were identified in the corridor, and looking at funding sources. And some of those are included in the plan, some of them are not. So again, it's just constantly being aware of what funding sources are out there, and really being responsive and proactive about planning for these things for the future, so...
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any supervisors have any follow-up? Okay, very good, Justin. I do not have anyone signed up for the Transportation Matters Public Hearing, but if any citizen would like to come forward, they have four minutes to address the board on this public hearing. Seeing no one come forward, we will close that public hearing. Next up, public address guidelines. Each speaker has four minutes, whether speaking as an individual or a representative. All comments must be directed to the chair or other supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. You'll begin by stating your name and address. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written statements or comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should this speaker engage any personal attacks, use profanity, or abusive language, or debate with the audience and not address the supervisors. We do not have anyone signed up for public address, but if any citizen would like to come forward, you'll have four minutes to address the board if you'll begin by stating your name and address. Seeing no citizens come forward, we will close public address. Addendum.
No addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
Very good, all right. All right, do I have a motion to move into work session?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Fitchukowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Demonts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
First up, year-end financial report.
Board members, our Budget Director Mark McGruder is here tonight to review year-end numbers with you, and Angie and I are also here for color commentary as needed.
Good evening. Give you a little financial update on fiscal year '23. Like I like to do each year, I want to give you a little background on our revenue structure. As you know, county revenue falls into two different categories, undesignated revenue and designated revenue. Undesignated revenues are unrestricted revenues, which basically means that they can be used for just about any purpose, whereas designated revenues are restricted revenues, meaning that they're earmarked for a specific purpose and can only be used for that purpose. And when you look at our revenue structure, about 89% of the lion's share of our revenue is undesignated, with 11% that's designated. So I wanted to kind of go back a little bit, in January, when we were talking about the development of the '24 budget, I stood in front of the board and talked about how strong our revenue picture looked like at that time, and I said that in '23, it was likely that we would exceed our revenue estimates by about $7 million. So in reality, we actually did meet that $7 million number. So undesignated revenue collections exceeded estimates by 8.1 million, or 6.37%. Again, my original estimate was 7 million, but the number, that 8.1 million, that included .7 million in prepaid taxes that are actually due in '24 and are budgeted in '24, and then about $400,000 in windfall collections from the 1% allowable value from the 2023 general real estate reassessment. So once you net those two numbers off of the 8.1, you're back at that $7 million number that I thought we would end the year with. Designated revenues, once we adjust for CSA expenditures, or CSA revenues, exceeded the estimates by $127,000, we were within .8%, .8 of 1% of the, of the budget. So I want to talk a little bit about that extra $7 million. So that extra $7 million is not all new money, and it's not ongoing, as we included 4 million of that going forward in the fiscal year '24 budget. So I want to talk about what that 7 million was made up of. So we had 3.3 million in interest earnings. So when we set the budget in the prior year, interest rates were at zero, and between March of '22, which is when we set the budget, until July of '23, the Fed increased the interest rates from a target rate of 0.25% to 5.5%. That's, that's one of the fastest in history, and so that's why we had a tremendous amount of extra revenue coming in because of those interest rate increases. We had 1.8 million in excess sales tax. Again, we had a major increase the prior year in sales tax, and we all thought it was a one-time thing because of all the stimulus money, but it, it held on, so we didn't anticipate that was going to happen with that major increase, so we had 1.8 million in sales tax. .8 in delinquent taxes, .7 in recordation taxes, and then .4 in all other categories. So of that 7 million, we didn't program all of that into the next year's budget, because some of that we didn't believe was going to be there continually, and some of that actually went away. So 1.5 million was the merchants' capital revenue that was included in the 7 million, which is no longer a revenue source for the county, so that had to come out. The recordation taxes are tied to real estate transactions, and as interest rates have climbed, we expected those numbers to kind of normalize, so we didn't include that .7 million. Delinquent taxes, based on trend, were at about $200,000 less, and then when we put this budget together, we anticipated that interest rates were going to drop. Everybody said, you know, the Fed's going to raise interest rates, but, you know, that's going to push a whole bunch of problems down the road, and the Fed was going to pull back. Well, that hasn't quite happened yet, and I don't know when it's going to happen, but so, you know, I anticipated a pullback a little bit in that so that we didn't get too far in that interest earnings number and then have a problem down the road. So in total, we added 4 million of that 7 into the next year's budget. All right, this chart basically shows the details behind it. Again, you'll see that 8.1 million, and then our designated revenue, so total collections were 8.2 million above. When we make the adjustments for the prepaid taxes, the windfall, and then the CSA adjustments, we were within 4.96% of the estimate.
I'd just like to say right there, Mark and I were going over this today, and you know that's really close, 4.96 on our huge budget, and Mark said, it's not as good as I usually do. Well, I pointed out that, as he said, unprecedented things have happened this year, so it's okay, it can be unprecedented that he's, you know, only a little bit further off, but still very close.
In my 34 years of local government experience, the last two to three years have been the most challenging I've ever seen in trying to do a budget, and to be that close is...
Well, we're not the only ones that are dealing with this. I mean, the state has a tremendous amount of money as well. There's a lot of factors that we can't control for, and I think we're going to see more of this. It's, I don't think that it's going to, you know, it's still going to be smooth sailing for a while, I think there's going to be some, some hiccups along the way, and so I think we need to be prepared for that when, when and if they do occur. All right, this next slide is, we did this, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, it's kind of a house, what holds up the house. So this is our total general fund cash, and so the total cash amount, 78.2 basically million dollars. And so this kind of breaks down where that cash is distributed, and then on the next slide, I'm going to kind of walk you through it as well. So we have a cash flow reserve, which is based on our cash flow needs over a 24-month period, that's $27 million. We have appropriations that have been set aside so far this year of 32 point, basically 32.4 million, those are planned expenditures that you've already appropriated. We have other reserves of 6.8, almost, you know, six, almost $7 million to deal with unforeseen or, you know, things that we don't anticipate, so that we can respond positively if there is a problem. And then we have the undesignated cash balance, which is the amount of money that you guys could actually spend without kind of damaging the house, and that's at just under $12 million. All right, so I'm going to walk you through this slide. So we've shown you this before, we call it the long sheet. It's our cash balance, we start with the June 30th, 2023 unaudited cash number, which is roughly $78 million. And then we have that, we have to take away the $27 million for our cash flow, which is based on that 24-month period of our cash flow needs. And then the next column is the $32 million. This is everything that's been appropriated to date, and then it's, it also includes restrictive funds, which the board cannot access or use except for, for specific purposes. And then we have our reserve funds, roughly $7 million. Those are set aside, again... Those are set aside, again, so that the county can respond positively to any unforeseen emergency that would occur, that we would need to address. And that leaves us with that just under $12 million number. I'll point out that $12 million is fairly consistent with balances that we've had in prior years. If you look on the far right of that chart, you have, in 2022, we were at $15 million, in '21, we were at $14 million, in '20, we were at $10 million. So that $12 million is in that range. Tonight on the agenda, you will have the opportunity to vote on the county carry-forward package, and that's 1.3, so I've pulled that number off. There's also an EMS ambulance, the skylights for the government center, and the estimated cost for the Eastern Montgomery EMS facility is about 10.6 million. We've got a current estimate or budget of 4.6 million, so I put an additional 6 million in there to cover the cost of finishing that project. That leaves you with an available expenditure balance, if you wanted to use those funds, of $3.4 million.
If, we can stay on this slide for just a second. If you compare this to last year, the beginning balance is significantly higher than last year. That's because we took into account items that are restricted, that Mark discussed on this sheet, to show you every amount of cash that we have available, and that number, once the financial statements are audited, should tie to the audited statements. It doesn't have any adjustment. But if you look at the third column and compare that to last year's sheet as well, that number is significantly higher because the items at the bottom of the sheet are not included last year. I just wanted to let you know because I know sometimes you do look back and see how we feared compared to last year.
And we've talked about that in previous years, that some of those restricted funds, because they were completely restricted, didn't show up on this sheet, so that's a great, I mean, this is full accountability.
Right. To be transparent with all of those amounts. And we also talked in the budget, toward the bottom of the third column, the future debt service, those are the funds that are set aside in the debt service fund for the county. Some of those are for the schools, about $3.4 million are for the schools to shave their debt service for their Christiansburg High School bond issuance. And then, as we talked about during the budget process, the county has also about $4.8 million in that fund that have been set aside for either future debt service or could be used for capital in the future, but it's important that we maintain the integrity of those funds so that we don't damage our financial condition, as Mark explained, and that our bond ratings stay solid and that kind of thing. But I just wanted to go over that a little bit in case anybody had questions later.
All right, the next slide is the cumulative change in cash. Basically, this shows our cash low point during the past 24-month period. That's where we get that cash flow reserve number that we need, and if you'll notice there, in September of '21, we were down to roughly $27 million. That's why we set that number at 27 million. Talk a little bit about the 24 revenue picture. The county is currently tracking very close to the 24 estimates. I'll have better estimates in January of 2024 to give you a better picture on where we stand on those. Again, there's a significant amount of uncertainty in the economy. We still have elevated inflation. It's not likely that the Fed will hit its target until late 2024. We have high interest rates. The Fed did a pause in September on the interest rates, but there isn't, they're anticipating another interest rate increase, and that it would be likely this year. We're in the middle of a credit crunch. Banks are less likely to loan in the current environment. That's going to create issues going forward. Consumer spending has slowed. Mandatory student loan payments have just started back up. That's going to put pressure on consumer spending. There's a possible short and shallow recession predicted later in the year, and possible interest rate reductions in '24, '25. Again, I don't know, I remember watching something a few years ago, and they were talking about Alan Greenspan, and somebody said, you know, Alan Greenspan doesn't know what interest rates are going to be. This is back, you know, back in the eighties. Nobody knows what interest rates are going to be before they are. If they knew that, they would short the market and, you know, they'd become billionaires. And so there's not that many billionaires, so it's hard to know what's going to happen, All right, and with that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, board members, starting off with Supervisor Bone.
Great job. I'm just going to start with Slide 3. Can you explain the windfall collections from the 1% allowable value a little bit?
So basically, and we're going to talk about this in a few minutes, I want to talk about the general reassessment. When you do a general reassessment, you're allowed to retain 1% allowable value and pull that away before you do your revenue-neutral calculation. So you basically get to inflate your revenue number by 1%. And so because that number isn't budgeted, because it's an inflated number that you get to keep that's supposed to then pay for the reassessment, you get the benefit of an additional amount of revenue in your base before you roll the rate back. So when I give you the final revenue number, that number would include that additional 1% allowable value in it, which isn't really, wasn't in the estimate because it was part of the reassessment that allowed you to have it.
I got you. And that reflects the first payment of the real estate, the June 5th payment portion of that that's not included in the budget?
On Slide 7, I have several questions. I'm just going to start with column with the 32 million, the ARPA money, clearly one-time money. It's all committed, and we're going to spend it on time.
That's correct.
So that number's, you know, going to go away in the next couple of years, right?
Right. So...
So the 78 million will go down, and that number will go down. Right. And then below, in the restricted, same column, in the restricted monies, the opioid monies, we're planning on getting a whole bunch more money, though, right?
Right. That's how much we collected through June 30th, but we are going to get a significant amount more than that.
And what do we expect in this fiscal year?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but at an upcoming board meeting, we're going to have a work session about the opioid abatement funds.
Perfect, thank you. And special commissioner, I don't know what that is.
I knew that somebody was going to ask about this. It's an odd name. When the, Marty, if I say the wrong thing, you can help me, but when the treasurer has delinquent tax sales on property, after the sales occur, the funds have to be held in this special commissioner account until everything is settled, all the debts are paid, and then once that's settled, the county gets to hold on to those funds, but these are the funds that haven't been determined yet. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Next column, just fuel reserve. So word on the street is that it's going to cost less. I mean, what was the rate that we have in our budget for a gallon of gas?
I couldn't tell you what the individual rate is. You know, we put that fuel reserve in many years ago. It was back during the, not this last peak in fuel prices, but the one before that, and it was just held there as a mechanism so that if fuel prices got way out of, way out of whack, the board would have an opportunity to go in and appropriate money to address something like that.
But that just stays flat year to year?
Yes.
Right. And then the 3.4, in the last column, the 3.4 million is one-time money, and we could spend it to the penny, but we don't want to.
That's correct.
What, what, how low can we go?
It's the discretion of the board to affect our rating, for example.
Well, I'll chime in on that one a little bit. On the previous slide, as Mark showed, the four pillars, and that last one is a pillar, and so, you know, when the bond rating agencies look at the overall financial health of the county, we are very sound, and with these reserves and what's pointed out there, I feel very good about it. We could, the board truly could appropriate that entire amount, but if we were to be going out for a debt issue in the next year or two or three, and the bond agencies looked at that, they'd go, "Well, you're taking everything that you had basically saved as one-time money, and you spent it all." I won't say that's good or bad.
Is there any guidance?
One of the items that we always want to make sure you remember is that we don't appropriate those funds for anything that is not truly one-time in nature.
Right.
We don't have, I don't think that there is a certain amount of got, specific guidance about that. I think that we have solid, because we have solid cash flow reserves and other reserves designations, that helps us, but if something comes up during the year that we don't anticipate, that's the category that it would need to come out of, so...
Gives you some cushion.
Right.
So I'm glad that you said that that way. If you go to the next slide, 8, and our cash flow has been pretty good in the last couple of years, clearly better than in 2021, right?
Mark, can you advance that slide?
September 2021.
The way that works, it's...
It's up and down.
It's not bad now. Our cash flow is not bad right now. The way we figure the calculation out is, we take a point in time, which is July of the two years before, and we say, if our cash balance this day was zero, and we look at what we spend and what we take in, this is what happens to the, to the trend. It is typically at the very lowest peak, at that first...
Right.
First fall.
Fiscal quarter.
Right. Before we could...
Or the second fiscal quarter.
And it's right before the taxes.
Before the taxes.
June 5th and December 4th.
Right. There are so many factors in that, but that is the typical low point is in that month or quarter.
Are we concerned that we'll go beyond 27 million?
I'm not concerned that we will, for our regular operations, I'm not. That number's gone up over the, over the years as well. Last year, it was $26 million. We do monitor it closely. If our budget grew exponentially, that number obviously would get bigger because the cycle's going to be greater, but at this point, I'm not concerned that it needs to be significantly more than that. I feel very comfortable with 27.
What about less?
No, I would, I personally would not recommend less either.
And then on Slide 9, you mentioned that high interest rates, and I'm sorry, credit crunch, banks are less likely to loan in current environment, and why is that? I mean...
Well, there's a whole host of reasons. I can give you a perfect example.
Do you have to have a high credit rating in order to...
Yes, that's exactly right.
That's the whole thing.
So what has happened, and what we've seen, particularly with the big banks, is that they're holding a lot of consumer debt, particularly on vehicles. And so, yeah, I read this story about a particular person that had a vehicle that they were overextended on, so they went and they traded the vehicle in. And so essentially, they were underwater on the vehicle. They owed, say, $4,000 more than the vehicle's worth. They bought another vehicle. The value of that vehicle, let's just say for the sake of argument, was $8,000. That the, the true value of it was $8,000. The dealerships put fees on top of it, but by the time they put the negative equity on the previous vehicle, they were at $12,000, $13,000. The banks loaned on that full value, and so then, when the consumer can't pay that debt, and they go to liquidate the loan, they can only liquidate the loan for the $8,000. And so a lot of banks are having these losses on the books, especially the big banks. And so right now, if your credit score isn't sky-high, they're less likely to loan to you because they don't want to take any added risk that they don't already have. That's just one example, but that is not just on car loans, but it's on everything.
I got you, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
Well, as is usually the case, you do an excellent job. I'd like to see that crystal ball one day. I don't really have any questions. Ms. Bone kind of asked a whole bunch and answered a lot of mine, so thank you.
Supervisor Ficciakowski.
I don't have any questions because I don't have my English-to-accounting dictionary with me, but when I get home and look up half the stuff you're talking about, I'm going to probably have some, but yeah, excellent job. I really, really appreciate the fact that you do your research on this and can kind of give us a heads-up, because you may be hard on yourself, but you're hitting pretty close to the mark as far as I'm concerned, so I appreciate it. But no, I don't have any questions.
Supervisor King.
I don't have no question, but I do appreciate you and your staff. Y'all do a wonderful job. Thanks.
Supervisor Demott.
Well, I'll echo what a lot of people have said. I'm always very impressed with the work that you do. I also think it's very important how frequently you come before us to give us updates. They're very comprehensive, and 4.96% is nothing to be ashamed of. That's amazing, so thank you for that. I do have one question on the long sheet on page 7, and I'm asking this question knowing that it might be something that you have to email me the answer to, so I'm looking specifically under the, the fourth column, the parental and caregiver leave. This doesn't really influence much, but where did we start with that fund compared to the 174 that we're at now?
It was actually two separate funds, and it dates back, in my mind, for some reason, I'm thinking like 2012 or something like that.
It was Matt Gabriel.
Yeah.
You want the amount.
Yeah, just where did it start? And the reason that I'm asking is, is that something that we need to look at to top up, or that's kind of what I'm getting at with that is...
We don't track that extremely well when people take parental and caregiver leave. Oftentimes, we just pay it out, and we, sometimes the department handles it, that the individual employee is in, and we're not, we don't even know. So it hasn't decreased significantly since we put that in place. I know that people do use it.
Yeah, I look at that as just such an incredible benefit to employees, and so if it's, that's really what I'm more interested in is it, is, yeah.
And usually departments are able to cover the cost. That's why we don't really know. We use, the time that we know is if a department can't absorb one of those costs, and then we appropriate it out of this fund, but generally, we, they can absorb them.
Okay, wonderful. That was the only question that I had that hadn't already been answered. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Excellent job, and you're not off that far. So, yeah, don't berate yourself. I was just glad that you included the animal shelter donations. I thought that was really good, and for those listening, the $446,910, this shows you how invested folks are in our animal care and adoption center. I think we should be very proud of that. Thanks.
Mark, going, looking at Slide 7, and just to make sure I've got that back, that correct, that $3.4 million, that is after, of course, we know that that's going to be voted on tonight, but assuming that it's voted on, you've already taken out the amounts for the government skylights, the ambulants, the EMS facility. We had a placeholder, but you've put $6 million there for that, and after you've taken that out, we still have the $3.4 million.
That's correct.
And that was, like you said, I want that crystal ball, right? I think we all do, right? So you had estimated $7 million, and four of that was for, $4 million of that was already applied towards this budget?
Yes, so the, so, you know, you know, and I'll do the same thing when we get into the 24 budget, I'll look at, you know, where we are in the current year, and then a portion of that money will probably be ongoing, and a portion will not be. And so we had $7 million that we had anticipated, so we actually added $7 million to the 24 budget, but $4 million of that was from this seven, and then the $3 million is our normal growth. So the $3 million that got pulled out were the things that I discussed, which were the merchants' capital that went away, and of course, I didn't think interest earnings were going to continue at the rate. were gonna continue at the rate that they were because I thought rates were gonna go down, so we kind of trimmed those down a little bit, and a few other categories like recordation. So, so, yeah, we programmed four million of the seven into next year's budget already.
With those, knowing that we wouldn't have that revenue source or the, those interests possibly, and still have three-point-four million dollars moving forward?
Yeah, the, the three-four over here is not, that's separate from, yeah.
Separate.
Yes.
Okay, very good. And these?
What you're asking, the amount of revenue that we collected above the estimate did impact the three-point-four million dollars at the end.
Right.
That is how it got there, basically.
Okay, very good. And so, this is all one-time money and not anticipate it to continue?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, well, I think, well, that's excellent for us. We always like to hear good news that we're on the positive side and not getting a, a negative report that we're, you know.
It's early in the year to say what the forecast will be for the revenue in the current year. I know that, as Mark alluded to, the interest earnings are still very strong, so we'll probably finish the year above the estimate for that, and maybe a few other categories as well, but it is difficult at this point to project that for the entire year.
I don't think it'll be seven million.
Right, right. I understand, and that's why you, on number, on page number nine, you tell us all the uncertainties that, you know, we, every year to be very cautious. Since we do have this, and, and this three-point-four million one-time monies, are there things that, immediate needs, that this is all undesignated, but it's only one-time in use?
I will, I will say this, you know, because Supervisor Bowen brought this up. This is a snapshot in time, and so you've appropriated, you know, on that one column, the thirty-two million dollars plus the restricted funds. Each board meeting, when you appropriate monies, you are pulling money from that three-point-four million dollars. Okay, so, you know, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's kind of front-loaded. We do a lot of carryovers and monies that are pulled in from the previous year, but throughout the year, you will continue to appropriate fund balance, which will draw down on that money. So, that number will drop as the year goes on.
We believe that the EMS, ambulance that we're gonna discuss later, and the government center skylights are critical current needs. I know that directors have shared, I've spoken with them about their thoughts about the budget for twenty-five. I have not talked to constitutional officers, or the libraries, or officer of election, DSS, but the county departments have shared that they're, they have staffing needs that they're gonna bring forward, and I asked them to share with Mark and me what they think they're gonna ask for. They're gonna, they're probably gonna ask for about fifteen positions. There's one position right now that is critical, that is, it's very timely if we could address that at this point or in the near future. In the finance department, there's a staffing situation right now that has caused them to be a little bit short-staffed temporarily, and that alone wouldn't, we could sustain that, and we could get through without taking any action. But we've also learned very recently, in the past month or so, six weeks, more about the opioid abatement program that we are the fiscal agent for, that's the regional program, the recovery ecosystem program. That's gonna be a lot of work. We can use part, part of the grant funding for, to cover the finance aspect, but if it's the will of the board, I would like to hear your feedback on possibly adding a, a position to the fin, finance department off-cycle to take care of those pressing needs.
And I'll just add to that, in a general term, as, as I head out the door in a couple of weeks, I'm gonna share some information with, with each of you as to what I see as challenges that are coming in the future. One of the things that, that is at the top of that list is ER stretched to the max, staffing-wise. This county continues to grow rapidly. The, the responsibilities and challenges that we see in, in many of our departments just continue to grow. I'm looking right at Bree and Justin right now. I mean, there are, there are so many things going on right now in the community, and we have the best employees in the world. I can't say enough for our employees, but our employees are maxed out. And if that's not addressed, you know, I, I won't be here for that budget, but I'm gonna plant, Mary's already told me I'm supposed to have it done before I leave, but they're, they're gonna be, that's gonna be critical.
General services is another huge need that.
I could name five departments right off the bat that are just stretch, you, you hit finance, general services, parks and recreation. As we continue to grow the, the services that we provide, we have to have staff. And as, as Chair Blevins has pointed out, that three-point-four is one-time money, but as you look at beginning to structure the needs for fiscal twenty-five and beyond, you're gonna have to take into account, how do we address staffing to provide the services that the citizens expect? I'm sorry, I went on a little soapbox there, but that's, that's critical. It's critical going forward.
So, am I, am I hearing correctly, with this three-point-four million, there is a way, even though it's considered one-time money, we could sustain these, at least, I thought you were gonna say general services. I didn't, I didn't know about the opioid, but the finance I know, but we would be able to sustain some of those critical positions now with this money?
It's, it's difficult. It would not, I would not say it's coming from the three-point-four million at the end of the sheet. I would say it's more because we feel like our revenue is still trending strong. I would not recommend that we fund a position out of this ending balance. The only way I would recommend that is if this can't possibly happen, so I'll just throw that out there. But if the board could commit that you would fund a position through the end of the current fiscal year and guarantee that you're gonna add dollars to the next year's budget, that's the piece you can't do, because you're not able to do that until the budget's approved. So, I feel comfortable that.
Well, and the seven board members sitting here tonight are not gonna be the seven board members that vote on the budget in spurring either, that's.
I feel comfortable that we could cover the finance critical need because that, that affects every part of the county. We have to get bills paid, we have to get payroll processed, we have to report accurately on the grant funding and make sure that we're meeting those requirements. We can continue to evaluate as we go along what the critical, if another need becomes that level, we could bring that to you. I don't think that they are at this point, but as Craig said, our employees work really, really hard, and they do a great job, and we don't want them to be burned out. We, we pay, we try to always include in the budget pay increases that are reflective of what is happening in our area. It's also important to show support for the employees by adding staff, because it, it's a balance, and the, I could go on a huge soapbox right now, but as the, as culture changes and the generations change, different things are important to different people, and money's not quite as important to people that are coming through the workforce now as it was for some older people like me. You know, that it's, they're more balanced, it's a better, probably a better approach. They're more balanced, but they want time off, and, and when they earn their time, they wanna take their time, but our work still has to get done, so it's important that we take care of employees in the ways that they need to be taken care of.
Absolutely.
So, am I hearing, I guess I need to ask the board, are, you're telling us that right now, we really need one, that one finance position?
Yes.
And what are you asking the board, I guess, and then I'll need to ask the board?
We could bring it to the neck, if, if there's general consensus that you'll entertain it, I could ask Mark to put in appropriation on the meeting, the next meeting, and ask that you appropriate funding for that position.
Board members?
The board doesn't have to take action to approve the position, you just need to approve the funding.
Do we have consensus to bring it?
You said right now, you're having problems in finance with people. Is, is that adding a person, or is that replacing somebody?
It is not replacing someone. Someone, I, I don't want to get too much into the personnel side, but there's a, there's a reason that the staffing's short. It's gonna be temporary, but it's not gonna be, like, not super temporary. It will be temporary and correct itself, but it's gonna take a little bit of time.
And that, and that coupled with the, we're looking at these opioid funds and what we're gonna have responsibility for, we, they're covered up in finance, they need help.
They were already covered up.
Well, that's true, too.
And it's worse. So, it, these two factors have compounded that, and as we move forward and we have more grant funding and that kind of thing, it's not gonna get less, so I think we need to, to take a look at that.
And you said this person would help with the opioid money, too?
That's what, that, they would kind of restructure the whole thing, but opioid money is one of the things that they would look at and take care of, yes.
Well, I would like to say this, while we're talking about employees. You know, a lot of times, we have employees leave and we don't replace them. So, we need to start replacing them. I mean, it's just, it's, as Angie and Craig said, you know, it's hard on employees to pick up more steps.
Right.
Because they have a life, too.
Right.
And I appreciate both of y'all bringing that up.
I have a follow-up question.
Supervisor Demont.
About the opioid position, and, and I will say, just emphatically, I support the addition of a staff member of the finance department. You mentioned, can some of the opioid abatement recovery funds be used for the administrative?
It can be. Twenty-five thousand dollars can be, but it's, it is one-time with this particular program, so it wouldn't be ongoing, but it would cover it for a portion of, of the time.
So, I appreciate that, and I just, I, my private spec, sector experience, when you add responsibilities to a job description, you disillusion your employees if those responsibilities don't come with more money or more benefits, and I don't think that that should be different in the public sector either. So, I, I think we have all long known that we are, we're at a critical point with our employees, where they're stretched to the max already. We have all long known that we need to address our issues with our employees. We don't want to lose good people. Good people leave for better working conditions. I've done it in my career on multiple occasions, and so we don't want to lose some of our best people for private sector, better work-life balance is, I think, what you're getting at, that people are looking for. So, I'm, I'm supportive of the one position, and also being really thoughtful in funding future positions. I don't think we should hand more responsibilities to people.
Well said, Supervisor Demont.
Supervisor Bond?
So, where would the money come from, again, for that position?
I.
It's not coming from the three-point-four.
It is not. I think we could appropriate it this year out of interest earnings, because we, it's not gonna be a huge portion. We know how much interest earnings have tracked so far, and then, as Supervisor Demont's mentioned, we could appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars of that from the opioid abatement money, and.
It's only a partial year.
It's only a partial year. It's gonna take a little bit of time to find somebody who can fill the position that's qualified. We can speak about that as well, so I, I don't think it'll be a problem to appropriate that small amount of money.
Can I ask other questions, or?
Go ahead.
Okay. You said something about the opioid is off-cycle? I'm not quite sure what that was. There was, you used the term off-cycle when you were talking about the opioid money.
Oh, I know what I was talking about. We, when we did the budget process, let me back up. I don't like to add positions in the middle of the year. Generally, I don't like to do that. I don't, it's not a best practice. However, these two things that have happened at the same time have caused me to, to make this request. The opioid abatement program was awarded, and we found out what the requirements were after the budget had been approved. If it had been, if we had gotten that award while the budget was going on, and we knew what the reporting requirements were, I would have asked for it then. That's the off-cycle portion.
And then, my other question about the opioid administration that we're doing, financial, whatever.
Fiscal agent.
Fiscal agent. Why are we footing the bill for the part that's not being covered? I mean, we're doing it with the other counties.
That position, the twenty-five thousand could possibly cover that, the cost of the position that's gonna be dedicated to opioid abatement.
Okay.
The rest of it is for other things. They've been stretched really thin for quite a while, so.
I just want to make sure that, I mean, the opioid money should cover.
That's right. I think it does cover that portion.
Yeah, we're not needing that person just for.
Right.
It's just another layer that's been added that.
That's right.
Requires attention.
So, do I, do I have a consensus? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I do have a few other questions since.
Go ahead.
So, you want me to keep going, or you wanna?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, when we approved the budget, we took a million dollars out of the school budget so that we could pass it and not raise taxes, have a revenue-neutral tax rate.
We didn't increase.
We, we didn't take anything out of the budget? We didn't fund their full request. Is that what you mean?
I agree, I agree with that, but this board couldn't find anywhere to take any more money out of our budget, so we just said, you know, too bad, schools, you're getting, you're not getting a million dollars of your request.
That's correct.
So, is there, can we talk to the school administration to see if there's any, you know?
One-time items?
Yeah, I know we asked them about it, but if we're working to put a finance person in, there might be an opportunity for them to put somebody else in to help them.
We can talk to them about that.
Because I think it was disproportionate, the money that we were trying to take out of our budget, more money took, was taken out. Like, I always say, two-thirds of our budget is schools and a third is the county, so two-thirds of the money that we were trying to take out of our whole budget should have come out of the, out of the schools, but I think more did than two-thirds. So, I think, I just want to make sure that we're being fair.
I understand. I don't think I can, I, I don't think that's a staff question, the part about the equity between how much.
No, I know that.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying. I'm not asking you. I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're being fair.
Right.
Across the board, and if, if, you know, because that was really a difficult conversation among the board when we were doing it.
One thing I would like to bring up about that, if, if the county, I want to say this so that it makes sense. The schools receive their appropriation from the Board of Supervisors at a very high level. It's appropriated into six or seven major categories. If the county appropriated funding at that high a level, we could find enough money to cover this position in finance, and I would not even be bringing it up to you. So, I understand your point. I have talked to Dr. Whitaker and Dr. Bregan, Craig has as well, frequently about if there are one-time needs, we can ask them again, we can ask them if there are critical needs they want to bring forward. I, I don't.
I would appreciate that.
Yes, I'll be glad to do that.
And then, in addition to the finance position, you mentioned general services, parks and rec, and Craig mentioned five categories right off the top of his head, you know, bring it, bring it to us so that we can, you know, take care of our county.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Any other comments?
One last question. So, this year, we didn't set aside a half-million dollars for New River Community College. Did I say that right?
We set aside four hun, we appropriated four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Is there any NRCC money on this, on this?
They didn't spend all of their appropriation in fiscal year twenty-three, so they, that portion has added into the ending balance, but if you'll look at the fourth column at the very bottom.
Uh-huh.
A hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars is how much they did not spend. So, we did. So we did put it in the reserve in case it ever came up that they were, they needed additional funding.
There's four hundred and fifty thousand allocated for the ACE program and there's also a hundred and ninety-two thousand in reserves.
That's right.
And that keeps climbing every year.
It will. This is the first year we did it, but it will keep climbing from now on. Yes, that's correct.
Set it aside so that if there's a year that they need five hundred and fifty thousand, then you can turn back.
Right, but right now it's tracking at six hundred and fifty thousand because we've got the extra one, almost two hundred thousand plus the four fifty.
They only spent three hundred thousand this year. Right, that's right.
So for us.
That will continue.
For next year, maybe four hundred thousand is the number or whatever.
Yes.
You know?
Right.
Just so that we start tweaking it, so that we're not, okay, I got you. Thank you.
All right, so we do have consensus to bring that to us at the next.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
I, I kind of would like to ask a question.
Sure.
And either Mr. Meadows or Angie could answer. And I, I've only been on the board for six years. I do not ever remember us giving the school board everything that they asked us for. And we never, we never worded it that we were taking money away from them like we are now.
What, what the board did this year and what has happened in years past is traditionally the school board asks for an amount to fully fund their proposed budget. This board reviews that and discusses that. And generally in my recommendation each year in the budget, it's been some percentage. It's, it's not been the full amount ever that I can recall.
Did we ever characterize that as taking money away from the school board?
I don't think the Board of Supervisors did, but.
But, but my, my question, I'm not, I'm not.
No, it, it.
I apologize for using that terminology.
That is just the wrong characterization. You're making this board look like a bunch of mean people and we will not give you what you asked for.
No, no, no. Yeah.
And, and I remember this board, and I think maybe yourself, saying that we always take the recommendation of the, of our administrator and we didn't this year. This year, but we have all in, in the past and we didn't give them what they wanted. And it was never characterized that we were taking money away from them. You can't take something away that you haven't given. So I, I would, I would like us to get away from that. If you want to rephrase that in another way, then maybe if you can find another way to rephrase it, but it's not taking money away.
I, I agree. I probably could have used better terms, terminology. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I don't have any problem rephrasing that. What I was trying to, to verbalize was how difficult it was for this board to come up with however many millions, was it like three million dollars or three and a half million dollars at the very end of our budget? Just so that we could have a revenue net neutral tax rate. And the administration proposed the budget with that three and a half million dollars in it. And this board decided to take the money out of that budget. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So if, if our administration proposed three and a half million more than what we have.
And it didn't get approved, it's still not taking anything away that was never given.
No, I, I get that, but the point is, is if, if, if the experts that we rely on are suggesting that we do something, I'd like to continue to rely on those experts to make sure that, you know, they spent time with our whole county government and with the school administration to make those specific recommendations.
And you also like to use the phrase, they need to get their fair share. As far as I know, we don't do revenue sharing with the school board. So I, I'm confused with what the fair share is.
Again, I'm relying on the guidance from our administration.
I've never heard them use those, those terms.
Well, I personally, I personally think that the schools are underfunded.
And that's the way you should phrase it.
But that's, I'm talking about the three and a half million dollars at this point in time. And I would like to understand if we can, is give back some of that three and a half million dollars? You know, since we have three and a half mil, I'm not saying that, that we should be doing that.
And I don't have a problem with you saying that or asking for that. I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with the characterization that we somehow cheated them and now we have to make up for it because we have some money left over.
Don't have to do anything. I understand that part.
Fine.
I don't.
That's not the way I heard it.
I, we cheated them. And if I did, then I apologize, but my point is, is we didn't meet everybody's needs. As the, as our administration and experts recommended we do, can we rectify some of that is what I'm trying to get at. And, you know, apologize for not being, you know, astute in the English language because I'm not.
And I apologize for getting off track because I am definitely in favor of adding another position to the finance division. And I'm also definitely in favor of getting some numbers together before our next budget and find out how many employees we are short. Because in the last three years, I know they have gone through a tough time. Starting with COVID and continuing on, it's never gotten any better and we need to make that right. We need to bring in some, some personnel.
And the focus, thank you, during that entire time from, from my seat as county administrator is making sure as best we can that we were taking care of our existing employees. We didn't really talk a lot about adding employees, but we're at a point now we can't ignore that anymore.
And I think we all realize too, and we appreciate all of our employees because we have the best. But it also, I think we realize too that if we need to retain and take care of our employees and give them that support, because if we lose them and try to rehire, it's more expensive. Starts it all over again for that. But Mr. Mark, thank you so much for the presentation. Again, I understand the three point four million dollars is good. We're, that crystal ball, keep, keep shaking it. Okay, we will take a five-minute break. Okay, I think we're ready to continue.
Board members, we also have Mark before us this evening to talk about the reass, general real estate reassessment review. If you remember back during budget season, one of the things we talked about was looking at the pros and cons of maybe doing a more frequent real estate reassessment. And since we just completed that in the last year, this was a good time to step back and take a look at where we are and just provide you with some general information. We, you know, we're not looking for consensus tonight unless there's just an abundance of, an opinion one way or the other. Mainly tonight is to share this information with you. Let the board have any questions or discussion and then at some point at a future meeting, you may want to bring this back to, to take an action one way or the other. But Mark, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. So again, the purpose is to provide information to the board to review changing, potentially changing the county's general real estate reassessment from every four years to either annually or every two years. Talk a little bit about the state code. So any county that has a population above fifty thousand shall conduct a general reassessment of real estate every four years. So basically Montgomery County is, their population is above fifty thousand. So we must conduct a reassessment every four years. However, if determined by majority vote, we could do that every three years and that's majority vote of the Board of Supervisors. Any county has a population of fifty thousand or less can elect to conduct a general reassessment at five or six-year intervals. And then any county may elect to use either annual or biennial, or the biennial reassessment method. So we went and looked at a comparison of counties across the state. There are ninety-five counties in Virginia. in Virginia. Of those 95, 66 assess every four years or longer, 27 do it annually or every two years. And then there are a few small jurisdictions that do either three or six years. There's two of those in the state. And then I have a breakdown of those that are annual, those that are every two years, those couple that are three or six. How many are four? How many are between four and six? Five, and then in six. This next chart shows the top 18 largest counties in Virginia by population, and then it's sorted by the number of real estate parcels. And we kind of did that for two reasons. One, the, the population for Virginia Tech kind of skews Montgomery County's total a little bit. And so when we look at the number of parcels, you'll notice that there are two other jurisdictions that are similar in size to us parcel-wise and in taxable assessed value-wise. And then probably if you looked at the student population, our population would be similar to theirs, and they do reassess every four years as well. Talk a little bit about the steps if we were to implement either annual or biennial reassessment. We would have to create a new county department. We would have to determine the start date for that cycle, add staff, we'd have to purchase some vehicles, computers and furniture, and set everything up for them to, to begin. So I want to share a formula for estimating the staffing needs. This formula is based on the International Association of Assessing Officers. And basically, the formula takes the total number of parcels that are assessed annually divided by the total number of parcels that one FTE or one assessor could assess annually. And so when you do that, when we looked at the numbers, it's 210 working days and 25 parcels per day is the standard. And when you do that calculation, the estimated staffing, if we were to have annual reassessment, would be 12 FTE. That would be an increase of eight additional FTEs. That would include nine assessors, one chief assessor, and staff. Currently, we have a cartographer and deed reader. That would require eight additional assessors, and then other existing staff is comparable to what other jurisdictions that are either on an annual or biennial basis, what their staffs look like. If we were to go to every two years of the biennial reassessment, we would need eight FTEs. That's an increase of four FTEs. Be five assessors, one chief assessor, and staff. Again, that same cartographer and deed reader would require four additional assessors, and the other existing staff is comparable to what other jurisdictions have. Estimated staffing and cost. So we went and looked at salary costs, vehicle costs, computers, equipment costs, and BOE costs. And so we have a total, if you look at the, the annual costs in the first year, it's about $640,000 if we were to go annual. It's about $320,000 if you're going to do biennial. One-time cost, $602,096, which would be your vehicles, laptops, furniture, and other equipment. For the biennials, $301,098. And so in the first year, you're looking at like 1.2 million in total costs. If you were to go annual, if you were biennial, it would be 621,000. So then what we wanted to do is we wanted to compare that to the projected reassessment contracted costs, which basically what I did was I took what we actually spent on the last reassessment, then I compared that to what we spent on the prior reassessment, and looked at how much it increased, which was around 12%. So I took our costs, all-inclusive, and then added that 12% to estimate, what, what would it look like in the future? And that's, again, an estimate based on, you know, what, what the increase was over that previous four-year period. So we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $900,000 for a projected reassessment contracted cost. So then we wanted to compare, what would the projected annual cost be over the estimated annual contract cost? And that would be $415,000 a year for the, if you went to annual reassessment, and $95,000 a year over the biennial reassessment. Okay. So I'm going to talk about some pros and cons. So these would be some reasons to change to more frequent reassessments. You'd have more accurate and up-to-date information. It would be a better reflection of the current fair market value of real estate, which results in a more equitable tax burden throughout the county. I'll give you an example of that. If values increase in one section of the county, the taxpayer isn't paying their fair share. Likewise, if values would decrease in a different portion of the county, the taxpayer is paying too much when you're on that four-year cycle. So there is this sense of tax burden equity. You would have some people that would be quote-unquote "free riders" that would be receiving the benefit but not paying their full cost, and others that may be paying more than their full cost because the values went down. It smoothes out real estate value changes more frequently, rather than having a large or a huge increase or a decrease every four years. The county still retains one, the 1% allowable value each time a reassessment occurs, which helps pay for the reassessment costs, assuming that values increase. It allows the market to dictate revenue generation, rather than the board adjusting the tax rate to create additional tax revenue, assuming a level real estate rate. Again, I want to emphasize, the value that you have multiplied times your tax rate gets you your tax liability. So when values go up, if the real estate tax rate stays the same, then you're going to get more revenue. Conversely, if values go down, the real estate stays the same, then you're going to lose revenue. There'd be greater accountability for the work performed, since it would be a county department rather than contracted. More frequent reassessments result in assessment of new construction values for which no permit was issued. What we find sometimes is that people go out and build things without a permit, and we don't pick them up until we actually physically go to that residence during the reassessment and see it. So you would see more of that stuff getting picked up that there's no building permit for. And then there are a limited number of qualified reassessment contractors available to do the reassessments. All right. Let's talk about reasons you may not want to change. Cost, overall cost increase to reassess annually or biennially compared, the, the cost is more if we were to go to annual or biennial reassessment. A revenue-neutral tax rate would be calculated by staff and evaluated by the board more frequently. If the revenue-neutral rate is higher than the existing rate, the revenue-neutral rate is considered a tax rate increase and has to be advertised as such. So in that instance, if values would plummet, let's say, and we had to increase the tax rate, it's just to stay revenue-neutral, you'd have to advertise it even though you were not really receiving any additional revenue as a result of it. But you'd have to advertise it as a tax rate increase, even though you didn't really receive any benefit. While a rising market adds increased value and additional tax revenue, a falling market could mean multiple years of tax rate increases to generate the same revenue, even with new construction growth. So when we looked at other localities, we actually saw that Montgomery County was the only county of the groups that we looked at that during the four-year decline, or during the, the time period where real estate assessments went down after the last recession, we were the only county that was solid every single year. In other words, we never lost value. Every other jurisdiction that reassessed during that same time period, their values were less on their books every single year for a several-year period. And that even included new construction growth. Now, that could be just a fluke in that it was a perfect storm for us, that we just happened to get it, and we were able to ride it through. But that actually did happen, that we did not receive any decline during that same time period. Real estate value changes may not be sufficient to pay for the cost of the reassessment. Increases may not be sufficient to cover the cost. And in years in which the real estate values declined, the county would not receive the benefit of that 1% allowable value. So when Supervisor Bowen had brought up the 1% windfall, that 1% only is available to you if you have at least 1% more. So if values drop, you don't have the 1% allowable value in order to receive the benefit. And of course, with everything nowadays, it's a challenge to hire a number of qualified staff to perform the assessments. So that's kind of the background, pros and cons of going either annual or biennial versus the, the four-year cycle that we're on. The next steps would be to get some direction from the board on what you would like to see us do. Either it's, you know, you want to see us continue with the four-year cycle or annual or biennial. And at this point, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mark. All right. We'll start off with Supervisor Shepherd.
I don't, I don't think I have any questions, just to comment. I, it sounds to me like staying with four years would be the best route. And that's just my opinion. That's all I have.
Supervisor Fidzikowski.
Yeah, this is a tough choice here, because I always thought that if we went to a two-year, I've never been in favor of a annual reassessment. I don't even know what that would look like. But I do think, after going through this, this period here where we had this huge jump in one year, I think every two-year would, would kind of smooth that out. And again, stealing from your, your pros on the, on the issue, it, it kind of, it seems to be more fair. And during this last reassessment, I, I heard a lot of citizens complained about having to deal with the contractor. And I wonder if that was under our roof, if, if that would be better, or, or would they just hate the county more?
I guess if they were under our roof, they would be our employees.
That's correct.
If our employees don't do a good job, we can hold them accountable.
Yeah.
And the other, and the other challenge honestly is, you know, I, I'm concerned for the future in terms of how many of these reappraisal companies are going to continue to be out there. I'm not, you know, we use Wamplo Reins, which is predominant, a predominant firm. There's Winggett and Associates. There's a few others that are out there, but they're having challenges getting staff as well. And so, you know, one of the thoughts, as we talked about this, was if they were in-house staff, at least we'd have control over that function. But then, as Mark aptly points out, then we have to find those people too, so...
Right. And they, I, I think that, that's a very good point that you made, that the, if all these companies were to go away, all these contractors, it would be an easy decision for us to make, because we would have no choice but to go with it. But in crunching the numbers, it just, it seems like up until this past year, or this past reassessment, it has been good. Like you said, it, I think that's what you said, that it hasn't varied a lot. We, yeah, we've increased in price, but not 30%.
We were, over a 12-year period, we were 1%, 1%, 3%.
Yeah.
Over a 12-year period. Now, if you compared that to people that were on the annual cycle, I mean, they had a, there were some, several down years in there, and we didn't experience any of those down years. But again, we didn't grow tremendously either over that entire period. I mean, normal real estate is supposed to grow, on average, I mean, as an asset class, around 4% per year. So you would expect over a four-year period a 16% increase, typically.
Well, have you done any research on how long this trend might last here?
It's, it's-
I mean, I might as well ask you. You're here.
No, it, it's hard to say. I mean, you know, we, we had a massive run-up. You know, it's interesting, because you know, in 2019, I stood up in front of the board and told everybody that we had just gone through the, the largest economic expansion in U.S. history. And everybody said we were going to have a massive recession. It was on the table, ready to go. And then COVID hit. We had this, this sort of massive dip for about a month and a half, two months, and then all of a sudden, everything just shot straight up. And so, and we've been riding this, this other roller coaster that is, is sky-high. So at some point, there is going to be some adjustment. I don't know when that's going to happen. If I knew that, you know, I'd go out there and pick those lottery numbers for tomorrow night, you know. But at some point, it's, there's going to be a pullback. I mean, it's just going to happen. I don't know when it's going to happen. Everybody is, you know, said what they think is going to happen. A lot of that stuff hasn't come to pass yet. I say yet, because there will always be a reset at some point. You just don't know when. I remember, I, I remember there was a, a stock market investor in the 80s, Peter Lynch. He, he talked about, you know, back in the 80s, when, when interest rates were, were double digits and stuff. He, he was standing up in front of a, a group of people, and he said, "I remember, you know, in 1980, if I knew what I knew back then, you know, yeah, I would have been able to do a lot of things." But you don't know that information until after it happens. And so it's-
And I, and I, yeah, I can think of examples from back then, too, that people bought properties, and then a few years later, the value dropped, just like with the price of fuel. It, it's gone up to $4 or $5 before, and then dropped back down to $2. I never thought that would happen, and now it's back up again. So you're, you're right. I don't know how you would ever predict that. But I definitely wouldn't want to jeopardize our credit rainy. I don't know if this would play into that. Is that something that our, these credit monitoring places look at?
I don't think the reassessment frequency is something that they look at. How the board responds to the, to the reassessment cycle, that's what they would look at. So as Mark described, when the market goes down, if it were to go down one year, then the board might have to increase the tax rate, even though it's revenue-neutral, to maintain its ground.
Okay.
I think it would be more the response of the board, not the, the cycle.
All right. Thank you.
Supervisor King.
Don't have no question, but looking at this, just glancing at it, I think we'll be better off just every four years. But if, I think if we, the board decides to move in a different direction, I would like to see the citizens' input in it, see what they think. And thank you for all your hard work again.
Supervisor Demots.
Just a couple of questions going through it. On the first slide, you talked about the state code and the break being at 50K. Is there another break at any point in the state code based on population? So 50K is, okay. And then, we talked about it a little bit, and I apologize if I'm asking another question that, that we're not able to answer tonight. We have talked about the challenges of staffing in office if we had it in-house. What are the education or experience requirements for somebody that would do this type of work? Is it, is it a field that's currently being trained at one of the universities? Is it something where these people could exist in the region possibly if we had a recruitment effort?
What I can tell you is, you know, having worked in other jurisdictions, I, I know that a lot of the appraisers, you know, a lot of them have four-year degrees, and then they have specialized training in real estate. And so there are, there are requirements. I don't know what that market share looks like. I, I know that our previous assessors all had college degrees and, and had a background in that, and I'm sure they had to take continuing education classes in that. So you just can't, it's not something that you can just, you know, show up and do. You have to have credentials to do it.
Okay. Yeah, and so that was to the point that Supervisor Fidzikowski was making. We could be well-intentioned and set up a whole entire office and not be able to recruit to fill the office, and then we, you know, might be back at square one. On the staffing and cost slide, where you were talking about the difference if we went to biennial versus annual, there's no accounting for that 1% windfall in this slide.
Yeah.
I, I understand that there couldn't be, but there, I just want to make sure that it's not present there. Okay. And then I'll also echo another point from Supervisor Fidzikowski about the, the reassessment contractors that we used this year. And I remember actually objecting to this as we were selecting them. And I remember actually objecting to this as we were selecting them, that their plan did not include a lot of availability to citizens who might object. So I think that that's a distinct advantage to having an in-house office, is that we can allow the citizens to feel like they at least have the opportunity to engage with the assessors. I think there is a benefit to that. I do have a question about one of the reasons you listed not to change. It was the second reason on Slide 10. A revenue-neutral real estate tax rate would be calculated by staff and evaluated by the BOS more frequently. Why is that a negative?
I think the, the idea behind this would be that it would be more in front of you every single year. So you would have people coming to you every year, maybe upset with their values, and you having to make a decision based on those values every single year, rather than only really dealing with that every two or every four years when those things occur. So I would think it would put a little bit more pressure on the board to have to address, not just, you know, every year you're making a decision on the tax rate, but you only, every four years, you're making the decision on the tax rate relative to massive increases or decreases in value. You would then be having to make that decision every single year.
Or every two years.
Or every two years.
Okay. And I get that. I, that frames it better for me as far as understanding why that would be a negative. That is all the questions that I had. I would be in support at seriously considering a biannual reassessment. I don't think we're at the point where we need an annual reassessment. This year was, I think all of us might be able to agree that it was painful this year with a 30% kind of across-the-board reassessment increase. And in my time on the board, this was my second reassessment. The first one didn't, wasn't that experience. Yeah. It was much more, or much less inflammatory. But I think we, we have, I really liked the point that you made about tax equity, tax burden equity. And I, I think that there are some areas of the county where the, the values grow much faster. They outpace others. Or you might even have situations where some homes are going way up and some are even decreasing in value. So that would be my approach to looking at a biannual reassessment, is to just make sure that we're equitable in applying the tax burden more frequently. Thank you very much for this. I know we've wanted to talk about it for a while, so I really appreciate having the opportunity to.
Supervisor Ben.
I agree. Great analysis. Several questions. So on Slide three, I noticed that nobody does a three-year cycle, but there's a three- or a six-year cycle. I don't understand that. They pick it like.
Yeah. So essentially, if they're a smaller jurisdiction, they can do it every four years, but there's that option if there is consensus to, to do every three. And so there are just two jurisdictions out there. They're both small jurisdictions. And my guess is at some point, they must have voted at one point to do a three-year cycle and got picked up as that. Clearly is not the norm.
And it's similar for the four or six. There's some that do that, would have the same decision.
Right.
So on Slide four, you know, you highlighted Bedford, Rockingham, and Montgomery, but we often compare ourselves to Albemarle and Roanoke counties. I'm shocked that Albemarle, and yet not shocked, because I've always perceived Albemarle being so much bigger than Montgomery. But Albemarle and Roanoke do it annually. And so those that are somewhat equivalent to us, nobody does it every two years. Correct? You know, I see Frederick and Stafford. Frederick's pretty close.
I think that, that is accurate. The most of them are not every two years. But I think that some of the research that Mark and his staff did showed that it would make more sense to go to biennial first and then evaluate if you want to go to annual, that it's a really big leap to go from every four years to annually. Yes.
Does anybody know, you know, how long ago Roanoke and Albemarle switched to annually, or how long they've been doing it annually? A long time ago.
Roanoke has done it a long time annually.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We asked that question of some of their staff, and it's like, it's been that way as long as anybody could remember.
Wow.
It might help, or might not, to understand too, this Charlottesville is a city.
Yeah.
And Roanoke is a city. So that takes a big chunk out.
Right. So when you, when you think about like Albemarle County, most people are thinking mostly about the city of Charlottesville because all of it's, they're together. So if you looked at the population of Charlottesville and Albemarle County, it would be a, a much bigger metropolitan population than Montgomery County would be.
And when you look at the assessed value, we do fall much closer in line with Bedford and Rockingham than Albemarle or Roanoke County.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm going to have to get back to my question on page six because I, I didn't make a good note there. This is just a general question on Slide seven. We, we often will see you, my apologies, list out annual costs and one-time costs. But how do you fit in the eventual replacement of the computers or eventual replacement of the cars? Or the maintenance of everything? I mean, it's never, it's in future years.
Yeah. I mean, this is kind of just a rough number. I mean, this is not perfect in the sense that, that there may be other costs. I mean, we, we had a few weeks to put together an analysis of all this stuff. So I'm certain that there's going to be some other costs that, that we didn't account for in there. But yes, you're correct in that at some point, you know, we would have to pay for the replacement of those vehicles. And those aren't in this first year. Now, certain things, you're, you know, I've said this before, there's no such thing as a one-time cost. Because eventually stuff wears out and you got to replace it. So everything is replaceable. Some things last longer than others. In other words, you know, up until a year ago, I was in a chair in my office, and I had the same office stuff for 15 years. So, and that, and somebody else is using that now. So that stuff can last a long time, and you don't ever probably replace it for 20 or 30 years. But other things wear out. Cars will wear out, and we'll have to replace those. So I don't think that we would replace a lot of these things within the first four years. That's why I didn't have it in the cost. But eventually you would have that cost again, and then it would cycle through again, just like we have here.
So staying on the slide number seven. So I understand the 1%, because it's not represented here. But is this net the 1% or is this not even taken into consideration?
Doesn't even consider it.
So if this last reassessment was an average reassessment and we had, I'm just picking the number because I don't remember it exactly, $400,000 left over from the 1%, right? We would have, in this instance, $800,000 because you do, in four years, because you had it twice.
Not necessarily that, you would have to have a 30% increase twice.
Uh-huh.
It wouldn't necessarily be that way. And I think that under either scenario, part of why we didn't put it in here is because it would be the same over the time span, because the trend of, you know what I'm saying? Like after two years, it's going to change this much. After four years, it's going to change this, but you're capturing that. Only, I guess, if it went up and down and up and down.
But you only got to capture 1% once in four years, if you do it every four years, but you're able to capture it twice.
On a smaller amount, because it doesn't grow as much over the two-year.
So what were the, the net 1% during the average years?
We can, not much.
No, I mean.
Not $95,000?
Probably, I don't know.
What, the average 1% value increase?
In this, in the years.
Yeah. So we get the 1%, but we pay for all our expenses. This year, we had $400,000 left over.
Right. The, the idea behind that 1% was, the reason I was told way back when was it was supposed to be there to help pay for the, the cost of the reassessment. And so that 1% allowable value would actually be double that windfall amount that I gave you in the previous presentation. It was, what, $400,000, it'd be $800,000 because it was only for half of.
But Andrew's saying it would be less because it wouldn't jump so much.
No, I'm just saying for the, for the instance of the, the 1% allowable value is actually double that number, but you're only picking it up for half the year. That's why you only got a windfall for half the year.
I see, I see, I see.
So it was, it would actually be double, which almost paid for the cost of the reassessment.
But it was a big increase. That is an impact, that has an impact on the 1%.
Yeah. But generally speaking, that 1% value is fairly consistent because it's based on the previous book value, which doesn't grow that much. Your previous book value was $9 billion. We're only adding $100 million a year to it. That $9 billion number that has grown by 1% is, so it's.
We always go up at least 1%. Are we always going to have at least $800,000?
On a $9 billion, but, on, yeah, we would.
So it would cover the cost.
Right.
I think that's the answer to your question.
Yeah. And then some, right? So technically, it would cover the $400,000, right? To do it annually if we really wanted to. So it's not.
That's right. If it went up, if it went up.
Yeah, but if the Great Recession is any indication, I was, I was thinking about that because like, okay, at least for the foreseeable future, our county is going to continue to grow the way that it's been, you know. But 20 years from now, or 40 years from now, it could be a whole different picture. But the board would have to adjust along the way, right? So, you know, at least for the short term, we could go, for example, to a two-year, and it would be netted, and we could get equity and more of those positive things. Am I reading that into your information correctly?
I think so. Do you think so?
Yeah. I mean, again, we have to grow in order for it to work. The, the, the only way that it doesn't work in our favor is when values go backwards.
Yeah, so we grow at least 1%.
Right. My, my question is, when was the last time we didn't grow 1%? Do you have any idea?
Well, we've never not grown 1% because we go four years before we have the increase. But if you went on an annual basis, let's say, there's a high likelihood that you could. Because there were jurisdictions that I looked at, that not only did they not grow by 1%, they went negative with new construction growth.
But during the Great Recession, we kept flat or 1%.
Only by luck. We happened to reassess at the top of the market.
Annually, could we figure that out? How long ago did we ever only grow by 1% or less?
It will be an estimate because we'll have to divide the increase by four and assume it went up evenly, but we can do that.
But somehow you figured it out in the Great, uh, the last, was it the last reassessment? That it was 1, 1, 3, or whatever? You, you quoted an example. Not this reassessment, but a prior one.
Four years ago, it was 3%. The four years, four years before that, it was 1. Four years before that, it was 1.
So there might have been years in the, when it only went up 1%, probably it went down some point.
You just didn't know. I see, I see what you were describing.
So then you wouldn't cover the cost.
Okay. So, as far as reassessment contractors, you know, it was discussed on Slide nine. It's my understanding that we've been using the firm that we have been using for decades and decades.
We do bid it out. It's not, it's, it's not a firm that, I mean, they have been successful in the bid procurement process. But yes, we have used them since I've been here. I don't know how far back beyond that.
But the question is, maybe we didn't do the RFQ properly to say, "You need to spend more time with our citizens."
I think that the RFP was appropriate. We don't have very many people respond, as Craig mentioned. We don't have many choices.
So if we ask for more time for our citizens to talk to them, they'd refuse it?
We did ask multiple times.
Yeah. Okay.
And, and they're, not trying to defend them at all, but their argument for that is they are professionally trained in real estate appraisal. So, yes, I understand there needs to be, citizens need to have the opportunity to be heard. But that's their argument is, we do this for a living every day. So.
So I skipped over, on page eight, smooths out real estate, this is a reason to change. Smooths out real estate value changes more frequently rather than having a large increase or decrease. Makes sense. Anybody, has any county experienced, when they do it more frequently, that there are actually less appeals? Because it's less of a shock?
We didn't ask that question.
I think it would be hard to know too, because no one has recently changed. So you would need to compare for that one jurisdiction because of how their citizenry respond. But nobody's changed recently to find out.
So in our county, for the last couple of reassessments, not this one, but the last couple, were the appeals so significantly more this time than in years past?
Yes, and that was because.
Like in the magnitude of 10 or?
Was it, was it, we know that.
We, we can get that for you. It was absolutely significant, but the driving reason it was significant were the percentages were so large, the increases. So.
And I'm going to try to go back to my note and see if I can. Can the county, like I imagine the staff, like I remember when the planning department was so short-staffed because there was just, you know, you had open positions that you weren't filling for lots of reasons. You probably got help from other departments at some point in time to just kind of like, ugh, keep up with what was necessary. Can other departments help this potential department?
Other departments didn't really help.
You know, if we got this department.
If, only if they happen to be trained assessors. But I also think that we don't have staff in other departments that have enough capacity to do that. An option would be if we could hire a, like some contractor temporary employees.
And I was going to just add to that because what I heard you say too is, in this past reassessment, yes, we hire a contract firm now, Wamplorines. However, there are several staff positions in the county. Vicky was very active with helping with the contractors. So, you know, we pitch in and we, and even if we had an independent department, we would continue to pitch in to assist. Maybe not to the degree.
That wouldn't be so different? Or would it relieve people like Vicky that do it on a regular?
People like Vicky if it was an internal department. Because we would ensure that we had the staffing in the internal department to cover it.
Of course. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Supervisor Biggs.
Well, I guess you guys know I've been advocating for a long time to look at the biannual reassessment. And the, the points that stuck out to me that, you know, you, you sort of brought up, that I've been an advocate for, is that number one, it gives us the up-to-date information. And, you know, instead of having a large increase or a large decrease every four years, I think it's just a more fair way, way to go. Also, I think it would be really great to have our own in-house department and our own folks to do this. Because one of the criticisms that I heard, I don't know if you guys heard this or not, but was, well, these people come into our county and they're not from here, and they don't know our county, and they're assessing our property. I'm just saying, that's what I heard. And that's, that's nothing against the company that came in and did our assessment. And I also think because of the construction that we have, the new construction, we could pick it up. Like you said, we could be picking it up and putting it on the roll and getting what we need from that. So I would really like to go ahead and investigate more closely the biannual reassessment. I would really like to go ahead and investigate more closely the biannual reassessment. That's the way I feel.
Thank you. I did hear also some of those complaints during the reassessment time that their accessibility for our citizens to be able to meet on Saturdays or after hours, I did hear that quite often that, you know, 8 to 5 doesn't cut it for everybody that works a 9 to 5 job and has kids, so would need it. I definitely am in favor of whichever route that we make it as accessible for our citizens. Also heard the same thing, not from here, so they don't really understand the property value. One other concern was they want that face-to-face, they want to meet someone face-to-face and have them listen to them for the appeals. I do think with the reassessment, several factors is that because it was such a huge increase, 30% over average, and when it went out, people were thinking it was at that original tax rate without having any reduction and that caused a lot of, you know, panic and, and not understanding that that's not your current rate. We haven't even set that. So, you know, four years, when I was thinking about doing it every two years, I was thinking, well, you wouldn't have that steep decline or incline, it would be more steady. But I do have a question when we're talking about, and I'm not sure, I still want to get lots of citizens' input to see what, because it could be very burdensome for them too versus every four years versus every two years, are they going to go through this whole process? Again, if the rates are low or high, is the board setting the, the tax rate differently? A lot of mailing out, a lot of that, that type of thing, so look at that side of it as well. But going back here on our employees and, and talking about if we do it in-house, which I'm in favor of in-house for us to do that, and I know we've already talked about the challenges of, you know, even if we did it in-house, hiring process and, and that type of thing, but do we, what if we did in-house and kept it at four years? The cost.
We can look at that. We talked about that a little bit today. One of the challenges, or maybe it was a different day, but as we prepared. One of the challenges with that is if we do a four-year, four-year cycle with in-house people, we would obviously have to hire fewer people if we spread those assessments out over the four years, but the problem is by the fourth year, it's been four years since you assessed the first group and they're stale and they might not, they, they wouldn't be current. One, a different thing we talked about would be maybe doing different cycles with different groups. That's just too cumbersome. That would not work, so that isn't really an option. We were trying to think of a lot of different ways. There are definitely benefits to having it in-house and managing that in-house that we've discussed. But I think if it was on a four-year cycle, it wouldn't work.
Okay, that answers. And then if we were to go with a, a new county department, where would we place them? Where would we room them, house them?
Well, that's a very interesting question as well. If, if the board does ultimately decide to change from the current system, as part of a presentation on next steps regarding the change, we'll, we'll have to talk about that, you know. The question, since assessment is typically part of the commissioner of the revenue's purview, would those folks be down there? But since it's a separate county department, not answering to the commissioner of the revenue, would they be somewhere else in this building? That's a question that's yet to be determined.
So I, I'm undecided just yet, but I do definitely want to hear from our citizens with what they're, you know, I had heard if you do it every year, you, in the long run, it's going to be the same amount for that citizen to pay. And I looked at it, if the cost went down or it wouldn't be such a sticker shock effect for that. But I definitely do want to hear from citizens on, and get their input as we move forward.
The board could, the board could ask for a, a public hearing or, or at one of the board meetings. I mean, like we do work sessions, we can have a public hearing. It's not a legal public hearing, but it's a public hearing to receive input from citizens on this topic. And if the board publishes that far enough in advance and gets the word out, then you could receive those comments as, and then use that as part of your decision-making.
Okay, supervisor Bunn?
One, if it's, like, two questions. One, if it's biannual, do you do half the county one year and the other half?
Yeah, they would split the parcels in half.
Say that again?
They would split the parcels in half, so they, we have 43,000 and be 27,000.
So somebody in the county is getting reassessed.
The data would still be a little bit stale because they-
Oh, yeah.
It takes a year to do the whole assessment, or maybe a little bit longer. They start about 18 months before.
And do you all have a recommendation?
I'll take that one. You know, as we've worked through this, we realized very quickly, there, there, there are some strong pros. I, I told Mark and Angie, I said, I could write a a white paper on why you should do an annual reassessment. I could write one for every two years. I could argue that you shouldn't change. I do think there's some benefits of having an in-house department that does the reassessment. I do think it would be a big leap for the county to move from every four years to annually. I think that would create a whole lot of noise that would take a while to settle. I believe that if the board has a desire to change, and that's the key, there's got to be four or more of you that want to see a change, that you should strongly consider the biennial with an in-house staff. That's not a recommendation. That would be what I think you could consider. The first key question that you've got to decide is have you heard enough information that would make you feel inclined to change from where we are with every four years? There's a whole lot of very good reasons to keep it at four years. I think as the county continues to grow, that you really should think about more frequently. But I can't sit here and tell you this is the time that you need to do that.
Would this, would this be something that could be taken up in a referendum?
Uh, no.
No.
Thinking he just nailed it, so.
And, and the reason is that you don't have the authority to do that? So, yeah. They have to, the state has to give you this specific authority. Now, you can have a public hearing and get the input from the citizens, but you can't have a vote on it or anything like that, so.
Thank you.
Can you include some estimates with that 1% at every other year? That would change the numbers.
It would change the numbers, but they're just going to, they're not going to be based on much because we haven't done that in the past. We can-
The, the, the problem with the 1% number is it, it, the starting point is whatever your book value was prior to your reassessment. So, I mean, I can tell you 1% on any single year, but it's just, it's, the last one was a $9 billion number, so, you know.
Right, right, right.
You know, this latest one's going to be on a $12 billion number. Because that's what the reassessed value is.
Right, right.
Okay, so that number goes up dramatically on a reassessment year, but it doesn't change much year to year. So for us to go back and you know, what you were originally asking for, it's not going to tell you anything because the only thing that I've added to that value is new construction value. So 1% of that next value is the same value that was there before and it's not real. Because it's not reflective of what's really happening, because you would have a reassessment, let's say, every single year, so that the $9 billion wouldn't have been $9 billion plus a little bit. It'd have been $9 billion plus 4% plus the new construction growth. You see what I'm saying?
4%?
Well, you would assume that you would, like I said earlier, if you had 4% normal growth in real estate every single year, it would grow.
Right.
Right? So you would start to see those increases every single year on your book value and that, like, my 1%, it was $9 billion before, it's now $12 billion, but you'd have that increase of whatever was added every single year, which would then not just be your new construction value. It would be the reassessment that went up every single year and so you'd have that growth pattern. But we don't have that because we don't have that four-year cycle. Does that make sense?
I mean, just, just kind of use maybe worst case of just 1% for a four-year twice reassessed. What would that number be versus?
Keep in mind, the 1%, the purpose behind the 1% is it allows you to keep that without having to advertise a tax increase.
Right, so you don't, you'd have to have the value.
That 1%, I think you're putting too much into that 1%. The 1% just allows, allows us to keep that money without having to say we're having a tax increase. That's all that 1% is.
You never saw the increase on any of the other years because it wasn't in there, it wasn't in there. The only thing that you have in that number is the new construction that was added. And the benefit you'd receive is of the increase.
And the new construction is added whether we're reassessing or not. We always, we're always adding it every year. Once we get building permits.
Very good point.
Yeah, the, the base value's not changing, but if someone puts on an addition, that house is going to go up in assessment, or if they, or if they put in new apartments. We don't wait four years to pick that money up. We pick it up when the permit, the occupation permit's coming.
Interesting. Thank you.
Any other follow-ups? Supervisor Shepherd?
Yeah, just one. And to your point about it being such a pain this time because of the, so much increase in the assessment, how long has it been since there was a 30% increase over four years?
Well, the last time was in 2008.
Really?
Yeah, so we went a 12-year cycle where it was, that's what I was saying, we only grew by 1%, 1%, 3%, that was over a 12-year period.
So there was 3%.
So we had a massive increase in 2008, then the next cycle was what, 2012, it did nothing. Then four years after that, it did nothing, and then then four years after that, it did nothing, and all of a sudden then it hit on 2023, it was a big deal. So we went three cycles with nothing. We had a big one, then three cycles with hardly anything, and then another big one.
Okay. That's all.
I was just going to say that, you know, like if we are seeking citizen input on this, you know, you've heard all the questions tonight. You have the chart with the pros and cons. I think that the citizens would need to have an understanding of the pros and the cons and just the basic understanding of reassessment, because I think what we saw to Chair Bovin's point was, you know, the confusion and the, the misunderstanding of when, you know, the information went out. So I think that there needs to be some kind of educational piece to this. That's all.
I, I would certainly agree that before the board were to have a public, or a public hearing, if you will, a public input session, that you know, our public information staff could put together a sheet that could be distributed, we could get some media coverage on it, we could make sure it's on the website to try to push that out as best we, we, we can.
Any follow-up? Mark, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Can you fire up the next one for me while you're there? Because I'm going to try to drive it from here. Well, it was, it was either jog down there or sit here, so I said, let me try to sit here. This last item on the work session this evening is a discussion about an emergency services memorandum of agreement. You do have two items under this work session item, a draft MOA related to volunteer EMS services and another draft related to volunteer fire. I think it has been pointed out that the wording between the two is, there's just a couple of changes, but what I really want to spend some time on this evening with this presentation is to sort of talk about where we are with this, how we got here, and, and this presentation I hope will help clear up some of the information that's included in these MOAs. The purpose of putting an MOA together to begin with is to enhance the operational capabilities of emergency services entities throughout the county by establishing an agreement between the county and the various volunteer emergency medical services and fire agencies that receive funding from the county. It's, it's basically to make sure there's a clear understanding between the county and the agencies as to how things are operating and what the expectations are. This, this came up as part of the FIRE program study that we had a couple of years ago now. It's also been quite a bit of discussion, I know, among a number of the board members as far as just some concerns with some of the challenges with one or two departments over the past couple of years in the county and just making sure that there's a clear understanding between the county and the agencies of the expectations. The MOA would establish standard operating procedures and protocols with respect to four areas: rosters, county provided vehicles and facilities, financial and purchasing requirements, and tax status. Under rosters, what the MOA proposes is to enhance communication between county staff and volunteer agencies by ensuring the county receives updated rosters annually or within 30 days of any changes to include changes in leadership with officer elections and appointments. There's been instances in the past couple of years in particular where rosters change, people come, people go. We don't have that information here, and one of the key things that we do with emergency services is we provide life insurance for a num, for all the volunteers. Well, if we don't have accurate rosters for that, and that's, that's a six-figure payment each year for a policy, it's not cheap. That's just one example. Other examples are when officers change, sometimes we don't even know there's been a change in leadership in a department because there's no requirement to make that communicated. Agencies will conduct an annual background check of active members. This was something that was, I think, suggested by FIRE programs. It's just to ensure that if a, if there's an active volunteer in the community running calls, either fire or rescue, that there's no liability concerns on, on the part of the agency or on the part of the county for those folks that are actively participating in calls. As I mentioned earlier, updating the roster provides the county with an updated number of active responders throughout the various areas of the county. That helps us understand if there's areas that may need supplemental coverage. A perfect example is with Shawswell and the number of volunteers that declined in that area, and it's ultimately how we began our service with paid first responders. And I've already mentioned this one earlier, but provides information for accurate insurance reporting. We want to make sure that every volunteer that's an active member is covered, and we want to make sure former members are reported correctly. And we also want to make sure that if members are no longer, no longer on a, on a agency's roster, that we take them off. Because if we don't, we wind up paying, we wind up paying for them and, and, you know, we need to ensure that we're covering the people that are running calls and then any former members that are there, but we don't need to be covering folks that haven't been a member of the squad for five or 10 years. County provided vehicles and facilities. This MOA has been developed to ensure that agency personnel, that is, the, the volunteers comply with all applicable, that's hard to say at 10 o'clock, safety procedures and established county policies with respect to vehicle operations and reporting of instances of damage to county property. You know, just basics that, that volunteers that are operating county vehicles comply with traffic laws. They have the appropriate training course to operate the vehicles that they operate. They understand the proper accident protocol and reporting, and they understand that because they're operating county vehicles that are titled to the county, that they're properly maintained. Also, the MOA would help enhance communication with county staff regarding needed repairs, maintenance, and upgrades to buildings and fixtures. Ensures appropriate use of county-owned facilities. You know, the, the facilities that are owned by the county, we want to make sure that we're always keeping those facilities in the best condition that we can. Not only because the volunteers are in there using them, but they're investments of taxpayer dollars and we need to make sure we're maintaining those facilities to the best that we can. Financial and purchasing requirements. The MOAs are designed to ensure agencies receive the supplies, equipment, and operational funding necessary to provide effective and efficient emergency response to our citizens. The only reason that we are in this business is to provide service to our citizens as professionally- service to our citizens as professionally and as quickly and as efficiently as possible. By addressing some of the purchasing things that are going on, we're hopeful that we can ensure more efficiency in some of those areas. Maintaining accountability for all goods, equipment, and services purchased with county funds or grants passing through the county. We want to make sure that funds that are provided to the volunteer agencies from grants, we ensure that those are properly reported and that we're complying with the requirements of the grant. Also establishing a process for purchasing and inventorying county-funded equipment. Making sure that the county knows what is actually out there and being used in, in the operations of the agencies. The MOA also establishes a process for financial controls and an annual audit of non-county funding. Again, this is something that's been pointed out a couple of times over the last couple of years that we just need, as, as a saying you guys have heard me use many times, that's not original to me, but trust but verify. We trust that our volunteers are out there doing what they need to be doing, that they're serving the community like we all expect and hope that they are, but it's a verification that those funds truly are being used in the areas that we understand they're being used. This one came up as a result of a, a issue with Shawswell a couple of years ago, but Shawswell Rescue, former rescue, ensure the county maintains compliance with applicable IRS regulations by requiring agencies to provide the county with their current tax status, IRS Form W-9 and IRS Form 990, if applicable, on an annual basis. There are requirements for nonprofit agencies that have to file certain documents with IRS, even, you know, nonprofits have to certify their, that they are a nonprofit. There was a situation where some things changed, and that wasn't filed for a couple of years, and it's just, again, a trust but verify. We're not, the county doesn't run those volunteer agencies, so we need to make sure, because we provide those agencies over a million dollars in taxpayer funds each year, that those are properly accounted for with the IRS. There's a question about, you know, what happens if an agency doesn't comply with the MOA? In general, the county staff does not intend to, to make this a punitive thing, that you beat somebody over the head, but the county staff would provide support to the agencies in meeting the requirements. If there's a volunteer agency that fails to comply with the MOA within defined time limits that the board may set, there would be, that, that agency would be subject to potential reduction or elimination of funding from the county until compliance with the terms of the MOA are met. That would just be if the board has agreed that there's an MOA between the county and an agency, and the agency, for whatever reason, in the future decides they don't want to do it. Well, then the, the carrot and stick that the board has is the funding. You can make a, you can make a decision regarding funding. That was a very broad overview of these two MOAs. I know the board took action earlier this evening to not move either of the drafts forward under new business tonight. However, the board, or staff would very much like to hear from the board, because these, I'll just say this, these were put together from discussions with board members over the last six months or a year about, these are some things that the board wanted to see us develop as a staff to move forward. That's why we're here. We're not trying to come up with stuff to make anybody's life harder. We're trying to make sure that we're, at the end of the day, we're putting things in place that going forward will hopefully help the agencies be able to be more efficient and move forward. But Brad's in the back. Brad has worked with our Fire and EMS staff internally to, to pull a lot of this together. I know there's been discussions at, at previous meetings among the board about what you're looking for. So at this point, I'll step back and let the board have any questions or discussions. I'll try to answer generally, and if there's more specifics, Brad's back there to help as well, so, and Angie.
Well, open up to the board, is it, best board, did you want to ask general questions? Or would you like to go step by step with the draft, to work off the draft general questions? Okay, I'll just, okay. Just, do we want to go section by section is what I'm asking, or just?
It might be easier for us to respond to your questions if you do go section by section. It wouldn't prevent you from returning to a section, but just to go through it like that, it might be easier.
Okay, all right, so we'll start off with the rosters. Questions or comments or concerns? Supervisor Demonts?
Just a, kind of a basic question about the roster. So if we're doing an annual background check, I'm assuming that would be a criminal-only background check annually, correct? Who funds that?
The county.
Background checks aren't free.
The county.
Okay.
That is.
That's right.
Brad, come on up, so you can chime in when needed.
And then I have a question related to the health insurance and rosters, and I think this is just for my own understanding. I understand that some of the volunteer agencies have life members, and those people are considered active on the rosters, so still eligible for health insurance?
It's life insurance, not health.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, life insurance.
You're good. Isn't that? I'm, I'm looking for clarification. Life members are included on the roster for life insurance as well?
Yes, and so the, the difference in membership between active and life, it's, we kind of ask for it to be kind of delineated to us. And so when we got that back, you know, each organization maybe has a different definition of what an active is, and of course, life is up to them as well, but we do try to separate that on that policy.
And I asked specifically about life members because my understanding of life members, and I'm looking to you guys as a resource, is that it's a considerable amount of time served, and so I would want to make sure that they would be also eligible for continuing life insurance benefits.
Believe that's the way it works.
Yes, I, I think what Mr. Meadows was speaking of is maybe someone that came and volunteered for two or three or four years and then left.
Okay.
You know, and is no longer a volunteer, but put two or three years in, without the updated roster, we found they were still on our insurance, we were still paying that premium, and they may live three or four states away at that time, so.
Okay. Those were all my roster questions.
Well, I have a question that Supervisor Demonts just brought up. So am I understand that we, for life insurance, that we are providing for life members and active members? Is that correct?
I believe, yes ma'am.
So even if we have someone, so for example, someone, just a couple of months ago, we gave, honored some life members awards up here. I had one of those recipients that did not show, reach out and said, what am I getting this award for? I said, a life membership. They said, I haven't answered a fire call in 20-plus years. I didn't even know I was considered a life member. So are we, are we saying that, so basically we're, which I'm just clear, just want clarification. Not that I'm arguing, I just want to make sure we're all are understanding. So basically, we're doing life insurance to any one, any, that one has ever served? Or has it been a volunteer fire or rescue?
Yeah, if they report to us that they're an active member or a life member, we're providing that.
And what we're trying to clarify with this roster issue is there have been people, people that have run calls over the years that didn't run, didn't run enough calls to earn a life status, but then they, for whatever reason, leave the, the squad or the, or the agency. But the rosters from some of the agencies aren't updated, and we're still paying a premium. We, we did a considerable audit of that this year. Bonnie Rutherford, who's working in Fire and EMS, really reached out to the agencies and got a lot of that cleared up, and that saved the county tens of thousands of dollars in insurance by simply not paying for members who weren't life members or were no longer active. And, and we just, you know, again, as stewards of the taxpayers' money, we need to ensure that we've got accurate records not only for life insurance, but as we talked about operation of vehicles and other things, you need to know who's out there driving your vehicles.
And I didn't mean to get too in the weeds on this, but I understand the question that you're asking as well, so maybe understanding what is a life member? What, what, you know, is it 10 years of service? Is it X number of calls, or?
We don't define that. I mean, we ask, we don't define what's an active member, what's a life member, that I'm aware of. We ask for each agency to send that to us, so I'm not sure what the different definitions are across the different departments.
Roster questions, Supervisor Fitchakowski?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we need to define that. It has to be the same for all agencies, because right now, I believe each agency determines that. I, I know some people that have worked for an agency for over 25 years, put in for life membership, don't get it. So there must be a reason why they don't get it. So that would be good to get that clarified. And also, the, the thing about the criminal background checks, Mr. Meadows, you said that the county would pay for that. That probably needs to be put in there, because I know further on, we talk about paying for other things. So that probably needs to be in writing, too, so that, that's clear that the agency's not responsible for that fee. Those are the only two I have.
Any one else? Supervisor King?
Just one thing on the criminal background check. I might have misunderstood what you said, Supervisor Demonts, but it's not an annual check. It's when you first start volunteering, is what's wrote here.
In the, on the slide, it says agencies will conduct an annual background check of active members. So are we, every single year, we're conducting a background check of all members?
I did this slide, that's a mistake. It's not every year.
Okay, that, that actually takes some of the concern out as well, because an annual background check of all active members is a chunk of change, so.
Yeah, because, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Well, and that was part of the rationale, I think, as we go further in, when, if, if there's a change under this one, you know, if there's any issues with complying with traffic laws, training, accident protocol, vehicle maintenance, if there's any changes, we would hope that that is reported to the, if there's a change in, if they lose a a driver's license, because that is in, in the MOA that it says that they have to have an active license. And that was a clarification. Initially, it said that it had to have an active Virginia license, but we have volunteers, especially that have West Virginia, North Carolina. So if it's a, if it's a valid state-issued license, it, it's good.
All right, so on the roster, because I'm looking at the, I guess that, nowhere in that first thing does it say anything about the, the background check? That number one just says that we're going to get a list with their current and updated training or certifications? Okay, oh, I see, it's all together, I see, okay. And then, and you know, that's, that's important, again, not only just for resources to know, you know, as we talk about the emergency response plan, and we talk about mitigation, working only just for the county, but regionally, we need to know in planning for the future, what is our accurate number of active first responders? What type of training do they have? Where are we lacking? What resources can we best utilize? So that would be, and also, you know, to be able to reckon, recognize. I also got, this year, when we did the awards ceremonies for life members, it was brought to my attention, why wasn't anyone from Christiansburg Rescue recognized that had life member status for the 20-plus years? And we were basically relying on information from the captains or chiefs to, to notify us. We don't keep records of that, and because of that, someone didn't get the recognition that they deserve. So, you know, it's very important, how do we address and plan for the future, or just plan for a response if we don't know who we have, and what type of training they have? So I think that's good. And so the county will pay for the, it says for active members, for their background check. What about, so that means for all current active members and anyone that will join? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So for everyone that's listed on the roster for an active member, if they have not, if they've already had a background check within, are we just going to make everybody do it? Or is it they've had it within the last five years? Can we use that, or?
I think we were only contemplating new members.
New members, yeah.
New members, but we would need to see current members?
It, it says new members. New active volunteer members.
Okay. And so we would require people that want to join, to become active, we would require them to be, have a background check moving forward. But anyone that's currently an active member, we're not going to check their background?
That's not the way it's currently written, no.
Right. MOU does not address current members, just new ones.
What disqualifies? Like, is it felony, is it a misdemeanor? Is it four misdemeanors? I mean, what would disqualify?
On a new member who they.
Because if we're gonna take a criminal, if we're gonna do a criminal background check, well, we need to have some parameters around what we're looking for.
I agree.
So I know when I conduct criminals, I'm looking for violent offenses, offenses against children, sex-based offenses, and drug-related offenses. Those are all disqualifiers for me, we need to have some parameters.
Yeah, but I do agree, that needs to be better defined.
So, you know, so my concern is, moving forward, background check. But how is that fair to a new member if others don't have to go to a background check as well?
Well, I can tell you this, around the fire department, everybody gets one when they come in there. Everybody has a background check.
So we would have, they would have records of that if we need to, so they don't have to redo them?
These people have been running calls for years, where's this coming from?
Well, there were some concerns with the.
Well, you're going, you're going to say this about every volunteer in here, just because it's two people? Really?
No, we're going to safeguard, so it doesn't happen.
It's not, it's not accusing anybody of anything, it's.
It's, you're saying you don't trust them?
No, we're not saying we don't trust them.
Somebody's been on a department for all these years, and you go to them and say, go get a background check? Really?
Well, you used two years, I, I don't think that's anybody saying to do that. But to set a time limit probably would be a smart thing, but.
And apparently, you're already asking for background checks. Everyone in Ryanair has a background check.
I just think if you go to these departments, somebody's been on there for years, and you say, well, you don't have a copy of your background check, you need to go get one. Really?
There was somebody on the rescue squad for years, and they were a convicted three-time felon.
Well, you could ask me to go get a background check, that don't mean I'm not going to mess up tomorrow out there.
You're right, you're right, you're absolutely right.
People in the face, I mean, that's just.
That is not, that is not slapping them in the face.
Really?
No, it's not. When you, when you take a position of responsibility, and they are, especially driving some of that equipment that is a million, $2 million apiece, you want to know that, who they are, what their background is.
Well, what I'm saying is.
And, and again, Supervisor Demonts implied that. You're only looking for certain things, you're not, you're not going through their credit history, you're not going through anything else other than, are they convicted felon? Or, or whatever. Class one misdemeanor convicted felon.
If somebody's been on a department five, 10 years, they have nothing against them, department has no complaints on them, and you're going to go to them and say you need to do a background check?
Because we've never had a MOA. We got to start someplace. There's got to be a place to start.
Number one is that MOA is coming out of Richmond, somebody don't even know this locality, don't know these citizens around here.
This came out of Richmond?
Where'd it come from?
From the mind of.
Our program or something, right?
I think that's what initiated some of the discussion.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, that's what initiated some discussion and then also some of the challenges that we've had with one agency that have resolved for sure.
I just don't think it's right for us to sit here and judge every department on what one or two departments has done.
How are they being judged?
But, but, but also, um, you know, these people are serving our residents. And we want to make sure that, you know, there aren't potential felons and.
It doesn't, it's not going to cost them anything.
I know, all they're doing is signing a piece of paper so that the background check can happen.
The only person that has to worry about it is somebody who has a history.
It's not like.
And they're hiding it.
They have to.
What I'm saying is respect for these people who go out here and run these calls. These people that go out here and take time off to go to the, oof, to go to the schools and educate on safety. A lot of volunteers save vacation times to go out here and do this.
Not taking any of that away.
It is when you go out here and ask somebody that's been there five to 10, 20 years, you need a background check.
If they've never had one when they came in, I think that's very reasonable.
I don't, I think it's a slap in the face.
Mr. King, you just said everyone in Reiner does a background check.
They do. I'm not only taking, I'm taking, talking for all volunteers, all of them. I don't know what other departments do. These people been there five, 10 years, they're out here supporting the citizens of Montgomery County. I'm just telling you, I'm not for going back and making somebody backtrack and do a criminal background check.
Is, um, Brad, is it, isn't it required for all EMS to have that done? Just to get their state, some kind of state certification?
Yeah, on the EMS side, you have to go through a background with the state to, to be a provider.
But there is no requirement for fire?
Not that I'm aware of. There may be, but I'm not aware of one. I just know from the EMS side where we had to do it when we, when we started.
Thank you.
Supervisor King, uh, you and I are on a roll tonight, I agree with you. I think that new members should have a background check, but I do agree that, um, our existing active members, especially, you know, you're looking at five, 10, 20 years of service, exemplary service where they're volunteering their time. I do think it's a slap in the face.
Well, I think it's about accountability. I don't know of any other board or commission that Montgomery County, um, has volunteers that we don't require some type of background check that I'm aware of. Is there any type of volunteer group that we don't require?
I don't, I don't know. Um, I think it's changing the terms midstream and I don't, I don't like that. I think we've recruited volunteers and suddenly we're changing the terms. I, it, it'd be no different than an, we're not paying people. It'd be no different than an employer saying after a couple of years of employment and now the parameters have changed and you have to do this to continue your employment. We could lose volunteers, that they don't want to do that, that they, ah, if somebody came to me after I'd been serving in a volunteer capacity for five years and said, now you have to have a criminal background check, I would be offended. I would personally be offended by that. And there's nothing on there.
Even if there was an issue or concern?
I, I would find it offensive, yes.
Yeah, the person that had the three felonies, he found it offensive too. He had been there, I think, 14 years.
Was that person EMS?
Yeah.
So.
Because the, the rule, the rule changed at a certain year. It hasn't always been that way.
So.
So he slid under the, he slid under the wire.
So he'd served for four, I don't know this, this case that you're speaking of. So I don't know what happened, I don't know what the consequences were or anything like that. I also believe in forgiveness if he had served for 14 years and not committed three felonies during that time. You know, at what point do you think somebody is?
How, how would we know that?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
And this might be just where, you know, we're on the background check, it might be just a mute point because apparently a lot of the volunteer agencies already require it?
And that's great, I think it's a great practice. I'm not against criminal background checks. But I, I just see the point and agree with the point that Supervisor King is making that, um, it certainly, I, I personally know that I would be offended if, if something happened, you know, and five or 10 years into my service, I was asked to then do a criminal background check. I, I see the point, I think it's relevant. That's all I'm saying.
What, okay, well, this is why we're discussing it. What if we set a, a year? Anybody that has five years or more, we don't, we don't make them get a background check. Maybe we just make it optional. Optional for anybody there five years or more.
I, I think that's more reasonable. I, I do, you know, I think that's more reasonable than saying, you know, somebody that's been there serving for a decade or, you know, I, I do think more junior, um, members, I still do think that it's offensive. That doesn't change my opinion on that. But if it allows us to move forward as a board, great. If it allows us to move forward with more of a spirit of collaboration, I'm all for it.
It's, it's one of those things that, um, you would literally have, if you wanted real security, you would have to do it for everybody every year.
Every year.
And nobody's asking for that. We're, right now, we're at the stage, we're asking for a background check when you come into the agency. So where do we go from there? Because if you don't do it every year, yeah, people could slip through the cracks. But generally speaking, if it's somebody local and they, they do something bad, everybody's going to know. I know in Shawsville, nobody gets away with doing anything unless everybody knows. So I'm sure other small communities are the same way. So I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there to the board, you know? We, we could, we could do something like that.
I would be okay with putting like a, for new members joining and then five years. And then again, we, we have some agencies that, that have, have already done background checks. So they would already have that.
Yeah, I, it, it's a very good possibility that the, um, the large majority of all of them have already done that.
Do the two, do we know if the two towns require background checks for their volunteers?
I don't know if they do for all of their new volunteers.
I kind of like, you know, for me, I understand how it might be interpreted as offensive. There are plenty of people that wouldn't interpret it as offensive. So, um, I also think that new people moving forward, being checked maybe every four or five years or something like that, is, is helping us, um, tighten it up, so.
I, I understand both sides of that story. I, I, um, I kind of have mixed emotions about both sides because I understand the point of needing it. You know, because if, maybe it's never been done and the situation that happened in Shawsville. But I also agree that it could cause hard feelings and lose volunteers. I will say this, unless something's changed, any of that information is public information. So you could do a search for anybody, you know, if you suspected somebody, but just throwing it out there.
So the staff recommendation for both of these was for new members, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And.
And I apologize, I didn't catch the word annual, but it's okay.
Yeah, is there a reason that you recommended that way for just new members?
I think to ensure that folks that are coming on aren't bringing on liabilities that could affect the, their volunteer agency or the county. And, you know, I can't, I don't know if all of them are, you know, Supervisor King has said Reiner does. I'm sure there's several others that do. This is just to ensure that they all do, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have to just say that I think my, my thought and the recommendation of one time new member background was that's what a lot of places do. I mean, it's what a lot of people, companies and organizations do. They check you when you come in the door and then they have some processes in place that you're supposed to report arrest or, or convictions or whatever. And then they deal with that if you get one. But there's not many places outside of probably some high level government or law enforcement or intelligence agencies that are continually doing background checks on their employees or certainly not their volunteers. So my, my thought is know who the person is as they come in, everybody knows, and then, you know, move forward. Was kind of the thought process that I had behind it.
Oh, I totally agree, I think it ought to be done when they come in, no question.
But I like, you know, whatever reporting, you know, that the volunteers are required, quote unquote, required to, to report any subsequent incidences. Can we have that language in there? Or do we have that in, in the county in general?
We do in the county.
Yeah.
It isn't, it is not in the draft, but we could add that in the draft.
I personally like that, but it doesn't mean anybody else likes that.
Does this tie in, in any way to the county insurance when we're insuring things that? Is that tied to it in any way or not?
The only way I could, we're trying to ensure that volunteers and, and individuals that operate county owned equipment, it's consistent with how county employees also that operate county owned equipment, making sure we're consistent with that across the board.
Sure, I'm glad we didn't ask for a, um, drug test.
I think.
There's drug tests later on in.
Yeah, but only if you're in an accident, that's federal, so.
I think the, um, question, I don't know that from, uh, from Vice Chair Biggs, I think the question was more about mitigating risk for, for our insurance purposes. I don't feel like, I don't feel like he answered that question.
They don't ask us that for the property and casualty insurance. They do ask us, um, when they're doing fidelity bond kind of insurance, if the people, which is later. If people who handle financial transactions have background checks, they do, they don't ask for this.
Okay.
So Supervisor King, what is your, um, thinking if it was just for new members?
I have no problem with just new members.
You know, there is something to be said about, uh, active members volunteering to do that if they hadn't had a background check. It gives that agency, um, potentially a little bit more credibility. I don't know if I'm using the right words, but, you know.
Incentivize 100% compliance with background checks in some way?
Possibly, but, you know. I think it's for the best benefit for our residents, really.
Well, candidly, that's the, the whole purpose of an MOA. It's to ensure that taxpayer dollars and citizens are represented. It's also to protect and, and make sure the volunteer, volunteers are covered consistently across the county.
So I, I was saying, yeah, it might even be a, not even that big of a deal if we, you know, acquiring everyone new to do that. And that some of our agencies may have already required that to begin with. My, my question was, I was looking at it as a fairness thing, as I'm coming in, you make me do it, but what about somebody else that didn't have to do it?
A month ago.
Or, well, you know, maybe, you know, somebody's been there for 10 years, what have they been, uh, I don't know, been considered active, but, and again, we don't know if the definition is not the same for every agency of active. My, my definition would be you're actively responding as a first responder, you know. Regularly, not that I've served once in three years and be considered active and then come back. But, um, yeah, I, we want to move, because it sounds like maybe some agencies already require background checks already anyway.
I think a good place to start is start with all new hires. And then if we want to.
New volunteers.
New volunteers, rather. Yeah, um, and then just see how it goes. And then we do another MOA someday if we think that there's an issue.
More update.
Right, exactly.
Well, Lord knows, I'll say this too, this, you know, I give a lot of thanks to Marty because Marty's the one who really cobbled a lot of this together from listening to staff and trying. So it is our best first effort. And again, one reason we wanted the work session is to have these opportunities to, to hammer some of this out. The reason, candidly, the reason it was on new business is if everybody came through the work session and said, yeah, that's great, let's go, then it was on there. So if the board wanted to vote on it, they could, but there's been lots of things in the past on new business that have been pulled, so that's fine too. There, there was no attempt there, but.
And I, and I would just say that I didn't take it as offensive. I know that Supervisor King and Demos, you, you look at it differently than I do. I just look at accountability that want to place as many safeguards as we can to protect our volunteers, our citizens. And at the end of the day, this board, we talk about, you know, trust but verify. Our citizens has, have ultimately put the trust in each one of us to make sure that we have safeguards and that we're not going to have issues. I mean, I would, you know, and that's not to show disrespect to anyone, but there, when it comes to accountability, we're having people that have volunteers that have access to million dollar equipment, million dollars of equipment, facilities. And that's not a slap in the face, I'm just saying moving forward because of the experience and some incidents that have come to light. Just making sure we have safeguards. But if the, the will of the board is, is moving forward, that's fine. I just want to make sure that, and, you know, like somebody just said that you could, I think it was Supervisor Shepherd, you could do searches or checks on anyone and if there was a concern or an issue that we would, um, move that forward.
Can we, um, can we include the language of if anything were to occur moving forward, it needs to be reportable? Isn't that what, what the county employees already have to do? We just, we're talking about that a moment ago.
If a county employee is charged with, found guilty, that, I don't know if they're charged, if they have to tell us.
Charged would be.
Right, if they're found guilty, they have to, the, the policy says they're to tell us that.
And can we do that for everyone? For this? Two?
Add a policy that says if a.
For everyone.
Volunteer is convicted of a crime.
Yep.
They need to report that information to their chief.
Their agency, so their agency.
Right. I think that would cover a lot. You know, one, all new, all new volunteers, but, um, it would catch potential issues. And alleviate a lot of the background check issue, potentially.
I could agree, I could agree with that. So moving forward, all new folks.
Get a background check.
And then we put in language that if there is a.
Convicted.
Active member, any member, uh, that, um, has a conviction, um.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, a conviction that they would be. Sorry, sorry, a conviction that they would be, be required to report that to the agency and then in turn the agency would report it to the county?
Yeah, but since Supervisor King had stepped out, maybe we should take, don't we have to vote to continue after 11?
Or is it 11:30?
Okay, should we take a break? No?
I don't know where Supervisor King.
I think he went to the restroom.
Okay.
So, um, just to add and not trying to pile on, but also defining the parameters around what would render somebody ineligible to volunteer would be good.
Marty's.
Marty's writing it right now.
Really, the agencies should be the one doing that, not us, because they're not our volunteers, they're the agencies. But, you know, we should be, maybe have some input with them.
Probably be a good idea to have a standard.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so, um, Mr. King, while you were gone, we were talking about moving forward, any new members to have a background check and that, um, if any members at all have a conviction, they are be, will call, language that they were required to tell their agency and in turn us. And then we are also going to talk about, um, language of the standard parameters of what, depending on what the conviction was. Good? Okay, all right. Good. Yeah, so are we, any other comments on the roster information? Everything else cut and dry? Good? Okay, all right. B, county provided vehicles and facilities. Any questions or comments, Supervisor Pidjikowski?
Yeah, I think there needs to be clarification on the last sentence. The EMS agency shall periodically verify that operators have a valid license. Should we set a period for that?
Uh, what are we talking about?
And that, and that is not, that's not verifying that with the county, that's verifying that with their department. Is that what you meant out of that? Yeah.
We could do annually or they annually verify? I don't know.
I, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I mean, um, I, I like what Supervisor Dematch referred to before. What is it, or maybe, uh, Mr. St. Clair, uh, how often is that verified out in other public sector or private sector? I mean, is there any guidance out there?
I don't know if there's any guidance. I know some places do like routine, you know, checks of driver's license status. If they're at a certain, uh, job that requires them to drive, um, they're subject to that when you get hired. I remember when I was at UPS, that was one of the things you had to sign that, you know, they could check your driver's license at any time. But I don't know that they had like a set schedule that did it if they just spot, uh, pulled. There, there probably are some agencies that do it on a routine basis. Um, again, it's one of those things that, you know, you want to ensure that the, anyone that's driving a vehicle that you own has a, has a license. It's about your due diligence, that there's some check in place, whether that is a time period that requires to be checked every so often or if it's up to the agency to say, you know, again, this, this offense occurs, you have to report it. I do, I also think there's some, um, there's some programs or some methods out there that you enter the employee or the person into and if they get a ticket or a DUI or something like that, then it triggers a report to you to show that that occurred. So there's all types of ways to monitor that. I think it's just taking some type of due diligence on the part of the, the agency to show that you're monitoring and making sure that, that folks, and sometimes it's, uh, not unintentional. Sometimes people's license expired, they don't know it. We've had that happen maybe in the past.
I might have also had that happen when trying to purchase something.
Yeah. That's expired, they know it's expired. I mean, it's not a huge deal, but you certainly want to have a valid license when you're operating a piece of that equipment.
And who, who's doing the checks? The EMS, the agencies themselves?
The agency would, yeah.
And are we, where, the county will pay for that?
I don't know how much it would be. It's just if they have it, if they have it in their hand.
It's just a presentation of here's my.
That, that means nothing.
It doesn't mean anything. But I think they can sign something and then they could go into DMV and check status probably.
Okay.
And you're referring to a, a program that you key in by driver's license number that'll pop if somebody gets their license.
There's systems available, um, I'm not sure if.
Hey, were you using anything like that?
For Virginia license, I, they, it's an automatic check of their license. So they're getting theirs checked, you know, quite often or on a routine basis for Virginia license. And then if, if you're out of state, you could, you know, put parameters in place that they have to, you know, have that check brought to you.
So I, I, because this is kind of a little bit of my expertise, just because you have, I show you a valid license does not mean it's not suspended.
That's a valid point, yes it is.
That is, that means nothing. And especially if we're, and we're not talking about somebody, you know, um, that has, you know, maybe your license expired, but what we're talking about here is that if someone's license was suspended, revoked, got a DUI, that also could, will affect their EVOC. And then if for any reason someone volunteer, and it could be maybe they didn't know their license was suspended. But what happens in the, because that happens all the time. People didn't take a class, they didn't get a notification, they moved, they changed their address and they did not realize their license was suspended. They go try to buy a car and they find out, um, or something like that. My biggest fear here is you have a volunteer in an emergency vehicle and there's an accident, even if it wasn't the emergency, the volunteer's fault, first thing they're going to do is check that valid driver's license. And you should not have been driving if you were suspended. And that is a huge liability on the county because you are allowing someone to drive a county vehicle.
I think that, you know, and been interested in this conversation, if, if it's the board's, um, direction, we could certainly speak with maybe Chief English and a few other folks and determine what systems they are using. If it's something that the county could provide, certainly if it's, it's something that's easy to use. Uh, because, you know, we don't want to put extra work on the volunteers. If it's something that, that's a, you know, kind of a, a system that allows them to use that, then we could, you know, count, we could come back to the board and let them know, let you guys know what that is and, and go from there if that's, if that's the direction of the board.
So I just, I guess what I'm just saying is that, you know, what, what is our definition of periodically? How we need to do it to keep up with that? Because that, that could be a huge, I see that as a huge liability and a lawsuit. If someone's not, um, and I don't know how the system to keep up with that, but at least definitely annually.
And I think some of the systems either check it periodically and maybe there are some out there that will alert you if that person has an offense that's charged. So we could, we could look into that and let you know. I mean, certainly that type of environment would take less work if the system's doing that for you, so.
Any other questions?
Well, you, you said a volunteer driving a big truck, we have liability. Is this also going to be induced for the paid side too?
Does our paid side?
Yeah.
Do these checks as well, correct? Yes.
It's my understanding, yes.
Yes, they, yeah.
It's my understanding, they do, yes.
I don't know if we have periodic updates of that or if we get a flag. We'll find out what happens with the paid staff for sure.
Yes, I, I feel certain we get a flag.
I think we get a flag. Because there've been instances in the past where it came to our attention without somebody reporting it, self-reporting.
And I know with the, with the paid EMS staff, we may have something more in place than that, I honestly just don't know. We'll find out.
Any other questions under? Two, three?
Under what?
Number two and number three.
I had a question about are we just looking at items number two and number three or are we looking at vehicles and facilities?
Um, yeah, I was just going down the list two and three.
Oh, never mind.
Everybody good on two and three? All right, four?
Good.
Comments on number four? Good?
On number four?
Yes.
Yes. Agency personnel driving the vehicle shall be subject to a drug and alcohol screening as soon after the accident as possible. That's already in our, uh, county handbook, right?
Correct.
So what, what does it mean soon as possible?
Probably should say as soon as, as soon as they are available to travel from the scene to undergo a test.
I mean, if, if I, if I wreck a truck and I'm not hurt, somebody needs to take me directly to the hospital. I mean, I'm just asking.
That's how it works.
Right. I mean, because if you wait till
Tomorrow morning.
Two, three days later, tomorrow morning.
No, 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 that's, no, no, you're right, yes. You're, that's exactly right.
I agree with you. If somebody wrecks a county vehicle, they need to be checked. I ain't fussing about that, I'm just trying to get a timeframe. Timeframe.
Yeah, and that's, that's consistent all the way across, that's not.
Within six hours?
I think the, the issue sometimes with defining it within certain hours is if somebody were hurt or if, yeah, if there, if there's factors like injury or other things.
Right.
So I think that's why we said as soon as possible, but.
Yeah, it's just to account for circumstances like injuries or things of that nature that if you put forth with, then they might not be able to go forth with and they're in violation of policy. So we try to say as soon as possible, uh, that they will go and be tested.
Okay, good. All right, number five?
This is the one I had a question about. So for vehicle maintenance records, each agency would be responsible for their own vehicle maintenance records and maintaining their own vehicle maintenance records, right?
Yeah, I think some of what this alludes to is, you know, keeping the vehicles up to manufacturer recommended specifications. We received some equipment back that hadn't had oil changes in a long time, well past.
That's kind of what I'm thinking about, brakes.
Inspections were out by, by several months, just, you know, if you're supposed to have it inspected in April, get it inspected in April. If it's 10,000 mile oil change, get a 10,000 mile oil change, not a 50,000 mile oil change, just to protect the equipment. That's really all it's about.
So each agency would do their own vehicle maintenance logs and their own vehicle maintenance. Do we specify where they get the maintenance done?
We don't.
By whom?
Nah.
No, okay. I don't know if that was a county provided service, so the agencies service their own vehicles? Or service the vehicles provided to them by the county, I guess would be a better way to phrase that.
Yes, as far as I'm aware, they take it to their, the, the shop of their choosing to have that done. Or they may even have, some of them may be folks that come on site and do it there, I'm not sure.
Not trying to make an issue where there is none, but that's interesting. It's fine.
Any other comments to number five? Good. Number six? Any questions or comments? Good. Good on number six? Number seven?
Yeah, I got one on that one. Says the EMS agency agrees that the county provided building shall at all times be alcohol-free. I agree with that. The building shall not be used by private parties or for non-EMS agency use without prior county approval. Number one is in Longchamp and in Reiner, we do not have a community building. We have a lot of people, it comes to Reiner, uses the firehouse for get-togethers.
We put community rooms in them for that.
Huh?
We put community rooms in them for that purpose.
Yeah. I mean, so every time that somebody wants to use the firehouse, we had to call over here and see if it's okay?
No.
That's what it says.
I don't think, no, it says, uh, without prior county approval. So I think if, if you, if the firehouse said, hey, we're going to, the community uses this on a routine basis and what, we'd be saying, fine. Right? I think, wouldn't we? I don't think you had to approve each one.
I, I, that's correct. I think if the, the chief of the agency says, you know, we have a community room or we have a room that we use this for community meetings, is that okay? And the county says yes, then there's no more discussion about, well, this reunion's this weekend, is that okay? Or is this event, no, it's a blanket. It's just, yeah, I can see how that can be read both ways real clear.
One of the things we were trying to get at is not eroding the tax status, the nonprofit status. Like they can't be using the building to make a whole, they can use it for their own fundraising, but they can't be running a business out of it. You know, that kind of non, but community use is different. I understand that's not exactly what the words say.
It says unless authorized by county first.
If the county said, yes, you can always use this for community use.
Well, that, that's good with this group here, but what happens when another group comes in? I got a problem with that wording. I'd like to see it gone.
Do, do we rent these community rooms or are they?
It's up to the individual agencies.
Do we rent the community rooms?
Do we rent it? What, what we do is we charge a hundred dollar deposit. And then when they get done, they clean up, they get their money back.
If they clean up.
Make sure they clean it up, because it is a county building. I just, I have, I have a problem with them wordings, because like I said, we're not going to be here forever. I'd like to see that taken out.
Are there any restrictions of somebody being denied use of a community room?
Not that I'm aware of.
So.
Other than you can't have a visit, you can't, they can't use it on Saturday to sell Amway products or something, but.
It, it could impact the nonprofit status of the agency and also if we built the building with, um, tax-exempt bonds, we can't let somebody earn money on the building. There are restrictions about that.
So then can we rework it so it, um, the building shall not be used by profit, private properties for any, uh, income generating business, enterprise?
For-profit activities.
For-profit activities, something like that.
Do you think about that?
Well, the only concern I have, and that's fine, the only concern I had, like I said, we're not all going to be sitting here forever.
Right.
And somebody else come in, they can stop it right quick. I mean, you could put something in there like she said, you know, not used for profit.
We can change that.
I got a, well, I don't want to belabor it, but I was going to say we could make some language that says agencies aren't allowed to use the facility or the rooms in the facility for any purpose that may jeopardize their tax-exempt status or.
They don't know what that.
They don't know what that means. They don't know what that means.
Yeah, okay, never mind. I'll be quiet.
But what if somebody came to the, the agency and said, hey, I, I'd like to make a $500 donation if I could use your room to present an insurance plan to seniors?
Nope.
So you got to write it, so you eliminate that stuff, too.
Yeah, not for profit. Non-revenue generating activities.
But it's a donation.
And we may be getting too, too detailed, but is there a, someone from the fire department that's kind of supervising if it was community use? Because as I'm understanding, that's not like, is, is there a separate room, or are you talking about they would use like the open area, not like in the base?
Meeting room.
In the meeting room?
In the kitchen, most time that's true. Yeah, at Reiner, I'm just saying Reiner, because that's what I know. Before you can use it, you have to know a fireman, and a fireman or a lady's auxiliary has to be present the whole time you're there.
That's good, yep.
Yep, yeah, put that in there, too.
At 11:30, at 11:30, 11:30. Yep. Okay. Any other comments on number seven? And, and those folks that are using the community room, they realize no alcohol as well. All right, financial and purchasing requirements. Number one.
Yeah, this, this one, this one kind of confuses me a little bit. It says the county shall procure. You can take that a couple of different ways. You're not saying that everything they purchase, all their supplies and stuff, have to be ordered through the county, or.
That is exactly what it's saying.
Yes.
If they're using county money.
Because all the agencies buy their own supplies. Right now.
This, right, that's, this is different than what happens now. It's, it's what the towns do. The towns, if it's town funds, they pay, they, the towns retain the funds, and then the invoices are processed through the town. That's what we're proposing.
All right, process through is different, though, then?
Procure.
Ordering it and procuring.
If it, um, the county policy, purchasing policy is if it's under $5,000 for a purchase, then the departments can order, the county departments can order it on their own, they just turn the bill in. So the agencies could do that as well. If it was more than that, it would have to go through the procurement process.
Okay, well, that might need to be specified in there, right?
Clarify that.
Yeah, I've always been a proponent of if everybody ordered the same one-inch Band-Aids, you could get a better price on them.
There've been times in the past when we did cooperative purchases for firefighting foam. I don't, I don't know any details about that, except that we could get a better price if we bought it in a larger quantity, and then we shared the cost between the agencies.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a good idea, but. If we're going to set a $5,000 limit, it probably needs to be worked in there somewhere.
You're done?
I'm done.
So what you're telling me is the allotment that each department gets, they will not receive it anymore. They'll have to come to the county and say, we need to buy this.
If it was, if it was something less than $5,000, they would say, here, I bought this, pay this bill.
So in other words, and what'd you say the reason for doing this was?
It's to provide a higher level of accountability of what's being, what the, that the taxpayer dollars are being spent for the agencies in an appropriate manner. It's, it it's more about making sure that there are internal controls about how the process happens, and that the payment of the bills happens on time. We've had some instances where it's, it could have affected the, the building itself because bills haven't been paid on, utility bills haven't been paid on time. If those things went through the county, we could ensure that they were being paid on time. There are a lot of pros and cons to this. Another thing that seems to me would be helpful to the agencies is they wouldn't have to do the processing of the invoices. They wouldn't have to write the checks. We could do that for them. But I understand that it's, that they're not accustomed to that, that currently they just do the purchases on their own.
I'm going to have to say upfront, bless you all, I'm not being mean to anybody. This is not the two towns. This is Montgomery County. We are out here volunteering and doing all this, and to me, this is just we don't trust you to do this, so we need to do it. That's my opinion.
I think the commissioner will probably help us with, you know, if, I mean, I can see that if we're, we're relieving the agencies of invoicing and paying checks and stuff like that, you know, maybe some would be interested in it.
I, I look at it as accounting, accountability for every tax dollar that's spent to be accountable, to also be efficient with the, the accounting aspect of it. If we can order stuff together in bulk, could say it'd be saving money, it saves times there, you know, for the reporting. Then again, the transparency to make sure we know where every dollar is spent.
But audits do that.
Well, if we did it with this proposed method, there would, those funds would be audited as part of the county's audit. We talked about if we didn't do it this way, and the agencies continued to pay their own invoices, then the agencies would have, have audits of those funds.
Wouldn't that be just kind of double work? To keep up with everything?
Yes.
And then you had mentioned for services, utilities that we've had agencies five or six months.
There have been occasions of that, and the way that we find out about that is the utility companies eventually contact us, because we're the owner of the building. So they have contacts with our general services folks who customarily pay those invoices, and they say, we're going to turn this off if you don't, if this bill isn't paid, if these bills are not paid. That's how we learned of those instances.
And do we incur late fees on that, too?
Yes. In some of those specific cases, we haven't seen the invoices to know how much the late fees were, because they would get, they would get paid, and the utility would remain on. But I know they had to have late fees, because if we don't pay our invoices for the county on time, some of them have a really tight turnaround, and we make sure we pay the utilities on time, because we'll be assessed fees. So I'm certain they would have to be as well.
Well, I, I, the utilities are so important, they're critical. You've got to keep your building heated and cooled and everything in it. That's, and then if you don't pay it, you have to pay a reconnection fee, and that's more money. I'm, I'm just wondering, I mean, does this happen a lot?
Not a lot.
But I mean, can we potentially say something like if, if this agency has missed X amount of or recurring expenses, then they go to this until they can prove that they don't need it.
Who's going to manage that?
Right, that's pretty cumbersome.
Somebody's going to be managing this.
Well, if we, if we have a system in place and we're always doing the same thing, that's different. We don't always, if they have late fees and we're not, we're not notified until it's about to be disconnected. So we wouldn't even always know.
But you would know through an audit, because there would be fees.
I'm more concerned about.
Not necessarily.
Turned off and you can't get into, get a.
Is the electricity bill over 5,000 a month?
No.
Okay, well, I mean, if you set that 5,000, then they could, you wouldn't know. They would just turn their invoice into the county.
5,000 is a procurement limit. They would still give us every invoice to pay for them. It's more, there is some trust and verify here. We're, we're writing hundreds of thousands of dollars, a million dollars almost a year to these agencies, and currently, we're not doing anything. We're not auditing them, we're not letting it run through us like this proposes.
Well, I have no problem with auditing. We get ours checked by an individual every year.
Now you're going to get it for free.
And like I said, you, like I said on the last round, you cannot judge a group of people on kind of what one person did.
We did look at, as I said, like the towns, which I, I heard you loud and clear that that doesn't necessarily mean it's what we're going to do. But that was part of our consideration, is what the other agencies are already doing, because Blacksburg and Christiansburg, with their town funds already do that, it's not a big adjustment for them to do with our, with our funds, I would assume, but I don't, I'm not 100% sure of that, but it would be the same process for them. The other agencies haven't been doing that, I understand that. It's different.
I have no problem with audits. I do have a problem with us having to run over here every time we need to buy something.
My perception is that you wouldn't have to come that frequently to do it. You could still buy what you want to buy when it's time, and then send us a batch of invoices at a time, but that's just how the process would work.
By like email. They don't physically have to come over here.
They could email them to us, yep.
Scan things if they had to, or whatever.
Like I said, I got no problem with audit. We're up and up on ours. You can come out there tomorrow and look at them. I do have a problem with grown people having to be babysitting.
I don't have a problem with it, but I think you're probably going to have to do some training. Because that's not the way they've done business, so.
I'm good with this, because I think we just need to be accountability as we move into the future, and as we get new members. And like Mr. King has said, this board is not going to be here. The members that are currently here volunteering are not going to be the same group of volunteers either, and we have to set up accountability. Every tax dollar that is spent, this board is accountable for. And so for transparency and accountability, and for just, you know, for ease of time and efficiency, I think this is the route we need to go. Do all of our other agencies do the same?
Right. Our outside agencies?
No.
Is that what you're talking about?
Well, that we give a million dollars to.
We don't give a million dollars to other agencies. I mean, I guess we do, but they're governmental kind of entities that are in separate entity that are getting a full audit. They're not, they're different than this. We don't have anybody exactly like this.
Do anybody that we give money to have to call the county and say, any other department have to call and say, well, I got to spend $7,000 on this?
A county department?
Yes.
Yes, every one of them.
I mean, I'm talking about outside departments.
We don't give.
Like, can you give me an example? I'm sorry.
Social service, libraries.
The social services, they don't, because they have a different system through the state. The libraries have to.
They have to call and get anything over 5,000 dollars?
Yes. They ha, yes, they do. It's a longer process than that, but yes, they have to go through the county. Director of Elections, Constitutional Officers go through us. There, the Constitutional Officers have some leeway, but we review what they do, as long as it complies with the state law. But generally, they go through our procurement, exactly like all the county departments do.
Well, I would just tell you upfront, I'm against this. I don't need a babysitter. I've been in over 20 years. I have never ripped nobody off.
Is there any way to do something like on a monthly, like uh, audit? Not a full audit, but uh, check. Maybe quarterly? You know, all purchases over thousand bucks, you know, just so that you're verifying that it, everything's working.
You'd be talking about employing an outside agency or firm to do that.
Is that what you, would it be an outside, like a CPA firm? Would it be the Finance Department?
I'm just trying to kind of get in the middle of this, as opposed to, I mean, I see what Supervisor King is talking about, but you know, what we want to do is be, have it, we want to have systems in place to make sure that everything's working the way it should be regularly. And we're already asking them for an audit, annual audit.
I think what you're asking for in that case would be difficult for the volunteers to do. It seems like that would take a whole lot of time for them to do that. I might.
Another thing about accountability that we've already had a little bit of a experience, bad experience about, is that this way, things that would be purchased, maybe big ticket items, I don't know, $20,000 on a piece of equipment or something, we would know, we would have that inventory, because we know what we purchase with county money, because as these are non, nonprofit volunteer agencies, you do a lot of your own fundraising, too. And that way, we could tell for sure, and we had that question or disputes with, in Shawsville, what was purchased with donation money, what was purchased with county money, we weren't sure. And so this would be a clear way of, of inventory and keeping up with those items as well.
But wouldn't an audit do that?
No.
No.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I think you need a motion to continue beyond 11:30.
Have a motion to continue since we're now at 11:30?
So moved.
Say it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
First, we got to come out of work session before you can take action.
I make a motion to come out of work session.
Say it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chairble Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, motion to continue since it is past 11:30?
Motion to continue past 11:30. Do we have to put a time limit on it, Marty, or just say past 11:30?
I think we normally put a time limit on it.
Yeah.
So maybe by 9:00 AM tomorrow, maybe.
I have a meeting at 8:30, I need to.
I think we're all glazing over, but besides that.
Well, we still got quite a bit of an agenda to go through, too.
Well, then I just, I'll just say make a motion to continue past 11:30. I won't put a time limit on it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chairble Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion to go back into work session.
So, yeah, motion to go back into work session.
Say it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chairble Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay. For number two, for all non-county funding, the EMS agency agrees to the following financial requirements.
May I speak about that? It has language in this about things being approved by two people, lots of things being approved by two people. There need to be dollar limits for those items, instead of just everything gets approved by two. Maybe that could be a thousand or $5,000, but it should not be for every single purchase that's made.
You're talking about to be, all purchases require signed approval?
Right, that's for items that are, yeah. Right, greater than a certain amount.
And at some point in time, does an officer need to be one of these signatures? Like the treasurer, or anything?
I don't. We're, item D talks about the people that are regularly handling the money. I don't know Supervisor King, are they, do you have a treasurer?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, yes, I think they would be probably because the treasurer's gonna be who signs the checks.
Treasurer and the chief.
Okay, there you go. If we need to put language in there, we can. I don't.
Well, just one question. If this is for non-county funding, why are we even dealing with this? It's not taxpayers' money. This is not taxpayers' money. So why is the county sticking into this?
Where you getting your money from?
Oh, it says non-county funding.
Yeah, but I mean.
Talking about fundraisers.
If they're citizens that live
Right.
in that area, they're taxpayers.
Well, the Citizens Trust is firing the rescue.
I realize they're just giving it to you.
I'm just trying to figure out why this is even in here.
Yeah, but that's like for grants, for example.
Grants have their own conformance guidelines.
Okay.
This is, this says non-county funding. It has nothing to do with Montgomery County.
Well, you know, actually, when we went through the Shawsville incident, I heard from many citizens who donated money to that agency over time, and they wanted to know where it was. I don't know. They, they didn't account for it. They did whatever they wanted with it. That didn't sit well with citizens. I think citizens kind of expect us to keep an eye on all that, but. All I know is that, we went through that in Shawsville. And there was quite a few people that were very upset.
As I said, you can't judge the whole batch of meters on count of one bad meter.
It's not judging.
I just don't think, the citizens donate this money and they trust the volunteers. I just, I'm trying to figure out why this staff is moving in on something that's not taxpayer money.
So are there any regulations then? Like if, like, let's say you have $100,000 per 10 that was given by, um, you know, citizens to your firehouse? And, and how do you regulate what you're spending it on? Like, what if somebody went out and spent it on something? I mean, the reason I'm thinking this, and it goes back to what happened in the Social Services Department years ago. Remember that? Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's why I'm thinking this. Like, how do you guys, you know, like, regulate what you're spending it on?
Number one is, nobody at the Fire Department can spend over $100 unless it's voted on from the whole department. Number two is, you gotta have two signatures.
Well, that makes sense.
I, I think somebody bought a boat because they had two signatures. Just throwing that out.
You wanna sign with me?
Was, were the two signatures the chief and the treasurer?
Something like that.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, number one is, you know, we've been talking about this, this and that, that and that. It's time we stepped up and prosecute whoever done it. I mean, if all this is coming out, let's prosecute them.
But it, it's not our money.
Oh, it ain't.
That's what you said.
No, you said down here.
I'm just saying, it could be done. And there's nothing we could do about it.
Well, there's one thing you can do about it, and I'm a firm believer in it. You can do what you want to on this earth, but when you leave here, karma's gonna get you.
Okay.
I have a couple of other questions about this. Uh, C, um, bank accounts and credit card statements are reconciled by someone not authorized to withdraw funds, write checks, or use the credit card. That might be very hard to comply with that. If you've got your treasurer. Normally in the treasurer role, you're authorized to withdraw funds, write checks, and use the credit card, and you might also be reconciling. So I don't know how feasible C is. D, and I call it out just because it does not make sense to me as I'm reading it. There's a couple of grammar errors in that one.
Oh, no.
A criminal background check shall be conducted on any persons who regularly handling money, who are, I think.
Either regularly handled or are handling, yes.
And then, uh, the last sentence, background check due to being an active voluntary member. Would it be volunteer member? Okay, so that one's just clunky. It needs to be rewritten.
I think your point on C, from an accounting and process standpoint, that's valid. I mean, there, there, you gain a lot by doing that, but it would be really hard.
It'd be very hard for, especially in a volunteer agency.
It's hard in a lot of small companies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's always an issue.
So I think, I think C is just not feasible. I think a lot of the concerns that are, we're attempting to address with this policy are handled by E. And so it, Todd spelled out a very clear policy at Reiner Volunteer Fire Department. All purchases over $100 have to be voted on by the entire membership, and all checks require two signatures. They're already doing A and B. So I don't know. I, it seems onerous a little bit. I get the point that you're making.
Yeah, because we know that Reiner's doing it, but we don't know what other ones are doing.
And so can the policy be codified? So we do know, yeah, this is the policy of this agency that allows the agency to have some flexibility that, that I'm, I'm getting. That means we could have all these different policies. I think this might, this just kind of goes further than we can expect a volunteer agency to comply with because it creates so many loopholes. Or so many, not loopholes, it creates so many layers. Yes. And I would be able to buy a box of Band-Aids or whatever, you know.
But can we put in, you know, if the common limits are like 100 bucks, that we actually put in here, 250 or more?
We started at like $5,000, yes.
But you understand you're talking about donating money, not taxpayer money. It's donation money. And if any volunteers I hear do oyster subbers, shrimp dinners, car washes, whatever they do, and you think they're gonna sit here and listen to us tell them what to do with that money? Really?
No, we're not saying what to do with it, saying how to account for it.
I wouldn't.
But you have a good plan at your station. Vice Chair Biggs said, we don't know about the others.
That's because you gotta trust them.
No, we need to set a standard for, that everybody can adhere to.
We're not talking about people collecting tax dollars. We're talking about donations.
Exactly.
If people in that community that donates money sees that department or squad's not doing correctly, they won't donate no more. Why are we trying to put our hands on everything?
Yeah, but people don't know how departments account for their money. And.
We, we have a meeting, a business meeting, first Thursday every month. Anybody in Montgomery County is welcome to come. What I am saying, I understand the tax dollar part, I really do. But keep your nose out of volunteer fundraising money. It don't concern us. It concerns the community.
Maybe, maybe we just say something like that each department has a way to account for it. Post it on their website. I don't know.
Maybe this should be.
I see a lot of value for the community members to know how it is accounted for. You know?
Maybe we should have a public hearing on it.
There you go.
Public hearing before we vote on it.
Just looking at this, would D solve most of this?
Yes, in my opinion.
You know?
Annual audit provided.
I'm sorry, E, yeah, I'm sorry, E.
Yeah.
I, I see the value in, in that we just want citizens, transparency for citizens to know if they had questions or concerns where or how the donations would be spent. And I see the, the consideration of how that can come back on the board because it is a Montgomery County volunteer agency. If they had questions or concerns. But I think that an audit would probably answer. And then each of these agencies, I would assume, have bylaws very similar to maybe what Reiner does of, you know, can't spend a certain amount without a vote, and you have to have two people.
Well, can we find out? Can't we just ask them what they're doing? I mean, I like what Todd said, what they're doing. I mean, can't we find out what everyone else is doing or not?
Brad?
Well, you can't, I think the answer to that is sure. You absolutely can. Again, the, the MOA is to set expectations. Because as Todd said earlier, too, I agree with that, that, you know, this, this group will be given a year from now, it'll be different three years. I mean, there's gonna be changes. And so just trying to set general expectations going forward.
So would E then, if we did something with E in the audit, what about that, Supervisor King?
I haven't told you my opinion.
Because you all do your own audit, right?
Yep. But that is what these volunteers went out and earned and raised money.
Okay. Because this is, um, different than that.
It is. And then just, just for my clarification on D, a criminal background check for any person who's handling the money, if they didn't otherwise have a background check due to being, being an active member. So we, we kind of already did the standard that moving forward, every new member would have one.
New active members? So they might have somebody who's doing their, their, uh, bookkeeping, who doesn't, isn't an active person that's running calls. It's just to make sure that those people are included.
Be like a bookkeeper or something.
Can we just start?
B.
E, E.
Which one?
The audit.
Just do E, not D. Is that what you're saying?
The audit.
They, they have.
No.
No, they don't. Not if I don't get it.
They have to file a 990. They don't have to have any kind of accounting auditing.
Yeah, that's just a good financial practice, but it's not a requirement.
Do we, any nonprofits that we give to as a board, do we require? What do we require?
We do request audits from all of them. We are saying the word audit, which is not always a tech, technical audit that Craig and I know, but it's some sort of outside party reviewing or looking at the statements and transactions. Some kind of accounting. And we do require that from our outside agencies, especially if they're getting as much money as these are. We, we request it from all of them.
But that's taxpayers' money that we're giving.
Yes.
But we require the nonprofits to provide some type of audit of everything, of their.
Of all of their funds. That's correct.
So like the donations to the Animal Care and Options Center? Is that an example?
We, um, like the Friends of Animal Care? The donations that come to the county are audited as part of our, are audited as part of our audit.
That's what I was asking.
But, um, like the Friends of the.
Right, that's a separate entity.
And we don't provide funding to them, so we don't ask them.
Do we have consensus of an E?
I would think that they. I'm okay with E.
E. Three.
And take out all the rest, okay?
EMS agency agrees to cooperate and provide us requested timely basis. All information required by, for the county's property casualty insurer. Good. What, what kind of information is that? Just general?
We ask them to update, um, if they do buy equipment that we're insuring that we don't know about, that kind of thing. Various, it's a kind of standard annual renewal to make sure that we're properly insuring them.
And doing sure everything's accounted for is when it's.
Yeah.
When we do the application each year for insurance.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand. So if, say, if an agency with their own donation money.
No, no.
No.
This is separate.
That doesn't have anything to do with that, yes.
Okay. All right, different. All right. Tax status request? Number one?
The first one, we're requesting that they provide us with their current stack, tax status as of July the 1st, which they are able to do. And then, um, the second one, we want them to give us a copy of their Form 990 on an annual basis. It needs to say, um, instead of a set date because it was pointed out earlier that some agencies have different fiscal years. If they've got a June 30th fiscal year, it doesn't make sense, it's July 1st. We could say within.
90 days of the.
Is that when they're due?
I think so.
Either 90 or 120.
Yeah, I would say 120 days of year end, of their fiscal year end.
No later than 120?
No later than.
Comments or questions on that? Same thing, is that, and three? W9? Same. Good. All right, non-compliance, E. Does that mean that if, for some reason, if they're not in compliance, um, they notify why? And if there's a reasonable explanation, that the county's gonna help them get into compliance?
And that, and that's why I put in this first slot, in the first bullet, you know, county, county staff's here to help. If there's issues with an agency not being able to comply with certain requirements, then we want to try to offer assistance to help bring it in, help the agency be in compliance. But if there's an active resistance to that, if you will, that, you know, no, we're not gonna do that, then the county has the right to, I mean, you, you have the purse strings, at least for a portion of the funding, and you own the equipment.
Comments, questions, concerns? Okay. All right. Two, the county agrees as follows. Number A. Good. Okay. Y'all are not asleep, are you? B.
We probably need to update that.
Based on the.
Based on the conversation that we've, we've had.
Yes.
If we're going to make it in compliance with the county policy.
$5,000. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
We, we would need to reword that.
Okay? And C. Good. C, good, everybody? All right. D.
We need to add E for the background checks.
Uh huh, yes, yes. All right. Miscellaneous. A. Everybody good?
Good.
B.
Miscellaneous.
B. Everybody good?
On C where it says approved by the county and agency. What's the county mean, Board of Supervisors? Yeah, on C.
Where it says, "Any such amendment shall be in writing and approved by the county and the agency."
Yeah, yes.
Can we put Board of Supervisors on there?
In state of county?
Well, only, only you can approve for the county, so.
For the county.
Only the Board of Supervisors can approve for the county.
I think what's driving that is it's, the MOAs are executed by the county administrator and the EMS agency head. But the county administrator's not going to sign an amended agreement unless it's come back through this board first.
Well, they, you're not authorized to do it unless it goes.
Yes, that's the legal requirement.
Thanks for the reminder.
There is no legal authority, but also just good common sense.
All right, both of those.
I don't know, Craig, we don't know what future administrators we might.
That's true.
Marty, is clause A enough under miscellaneous to deal with like severability? Like, this is addressing, if part of it can be severed off and is no longer enforceable.
Right, if you have one provision was, then we all agree that the remainder would continue.
Does there need to be any type of renegotiation term limit of the agreement? Or, because we're just entering into an agreement in perpetuity. And I don't know contract law versus memorandum of agreement law.
I think, I think what this MOA is, it sets parameters about how the county is going to do funding. And the funding is going to be subject to your approval anyway. And if you don't fund, then this thing is not worth anything anymore. And if you want to change it, then you enter negotiations.
I ask about term because we can, it C gives us the right to reevaluate the terms of the agreement. But if, if we can't agree on new terms, then we still have this agreement.
Correct.
So there's no out at any point.
The out is you don't fund.
Okay.
Yeah, because it is, that's a very valid point. I mean, through the appropriation process, through the budget every year, if the board ever says, we're not funded.
Yeah, and this agreement's not, doesn't matter anymore.
Okay.
And you could put an annual renewal, it renews automatically unless one of the parties wants to withdraw. We could put something like that in there.
I think if the funding is the tie, then that's not necessary.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you. And this, for the other one, we'll just change the fire and EMS and, okay. And same thing, all right. Thank you all for your work on that. Now, the motion to come out of work session.
They're moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right.
Can we take a quick break to just kind of have a few minutes to walk around?
Certainly, we'll take a quick. Five minutes before you can wake up.
Quick break.
Is that air blown on your ass as all water?
That air's, that air's got cold right behind. We're going to zip through. Well, we're, we're ready to zip through, that's it.
All right, everybody? Ready? All right. Items of consent.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, new business. Amend ordinance tax relief for the elderly and handicapped.
So moved.
Second.
And a second, any discussion?
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
We have referred to that as tax relief for the elderly and disabled.
Yeah, because it is disabled, not just handicapped.
So can we make a friendly amendment to the motion to change the verbiage?
Well, that's what the ordinance says.
What the code says.
Okay.
It's what the code says?
It says handicapped?
The ordinance says exemption and defer for elderly and disabled, yeah.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yes. So what we're naming it, but it's correct in the ordinance, okay. So, a motion and a second, or amend it for its tax relief of the elderly and disabled. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Amend ordinance cost reimbursement for emergency medical transport.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, amend 2025 Comprehensive Plan Adopted Transportation Matters Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
D and E, we already removed off. So does that go as D or does that state, does it say that as F or does it matter, I guess? All right. All right, appropriations FY23 County carryout.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Appropriation County Capital Fund.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King. Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Me hanging here.
All right, are we? We got everybody? Oh goodness, all right. We caught up? All right. Support Highway Safety Improvement Program.
So moved.
Second.
Grant application. Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Right.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. National Domestic Violence Awareness Month for October.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Operation Green Light for Veterans.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Was that you, Steve, seconded it?
Yeah.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, county, county attorney.
Yeah, there you go.
If you get up, just keep going.
I have no report.
County Administrator.
One item I wanted to mention tonight, board members, is I know several folks came to a recent meeting were concerned about pipeline safety training and making sure that information was out there regarding that. We're going to be working with staff. We also learned about Franklin County receiving a grant. That was, that was interesting. We're going to be following up on that. I've asked staff to look at that. There will be scheduled in the weeks ahead, some discussion. And perhaps if the board desires a community meeting to talk about when the pipeline is in operation, how certain things would be addressed. I, I just want to assure folks, that's, that's well at hand. Our staff trains for challenges and issues all the time, but I know there's specific concerns because the pipeline is a new thing in the county. The pipeline of this size is a new thing in the county. So we will certainly provide more information as that's available to the citizens about how things would be handled should something happen there. And other than that, that was my only item this evening.
Can I ask you a question? It might be community meetings because there's like three mountain ranges that it crosses, so. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Hill?
We had a broadband update today and GigaBeam and AEP are working very closely together. And AEP told us that they had redesigned some of, rescheduled some of their upgrades so that people can get hooked up to our broadband more quickly.
Excellent. Supervisor Demots?
No report.
Supervisor Bone?
No report.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No report.
Supervisor Fidjikowski?
Yes, I don't have anything very long, but I did take the, I think you all got an email from a company that did pipeline safety training. And they held it right in Blacksburg, there were several.
there were several of our fire chiefs there, a lot of gas company employees. I thought the training was, was pretty good. They talked about some things that are, when they tell you this is what you do, or this is what you want to look for, made a lot of sense, and I think it'll be very beneficial to get that out to our citizens, too. I don't think it's gonna be what they want, because they want specific things, but until Vice Chair Biggs tells us where it's gonna blow up, we don't really know.
It'll come to me.
It's one piece of the big puzzle.
Yeah, and it was worthwhile, so if it comes around again, if you get an opportunity, because I think it will, it is worth going to, and they do a little tabletop exercise, and everybody gets to contribute to that. But again, I would, off of what Craig said earlier, please remember that you put his family in your thoughts and prayers, going through a tough time right now, and we will definitely, as soon as I hear, I will share when arrangements will be made, so.
Thank you, I should have mentioned that. I did, I did see on Facebook that the family had posted that visitation would be 10 to 12 on Saturday at Horn Funeral Home, and this funeral would be immediately thereafter at noon. Now, that was posted by the family on Facebook, but I don't.
Yes, but did you notice what the date was?
Saturday.
Of the following Saturday, I think is what was listed, and that's what I need to check on to make sure it's not this Saturday and not the following Saturday, because they, the family did talk about waiting for it due to family members coming in from.
It does say the 21st, yes, it does.
Okay, so, but I'm gonna double check on that, just to make sure.
And we will, yes, we will keep the board apprised when we know more, too.
That's all I got.
Supervisor King?
I didn't see that.
Don't have no report, but I would like to bring something up. You know, here recently, we found out we didn't have enough large baseball fields in the county, and I brought up at meet before last about the small field up at Auburn Elementary School. Me and superintendent met out there one Monday morning and walked around it, and it has everything there. It's got dugouts, fence, and I'd like to get consensus tonight to ask the county staff to have the companies that's doing at Riner Park, to go out and see what it would take to extend that baseball field out, so it'd be a larger field for the 13 and up for the baseball. And just my opinion and some others, about all we'd have to do is move the outside fence down, move it out, and do some grading, and the field would be up and running, and we'd at least have one more field in the county.
You're not talking about the middle school?
Well, they, the middle school would be using it, but the field itself is at the elementary school.
I just, it's been a long time since I've been out there. I thought it was behind where the old elementary school used to be.
Well, that's the boys', this and here's all the way at the elementary school. And my understanding is they don't think it would take that much contributions for us to make it happen. And that'd be at least one more field, and like I brought up at our last meeting, you know, the parents are appreciative that the field's going in and out at Till Park, but their concern is still, school gets out at 2:30, and like some of the school people told me that, you know, they got buses coming out at 2:30, then you gotta get back to school and carry the other students home. And they're having problems getting bus drivers. So I think this here would, would really do good for the community and the county as a whole, because when the middle schoolers and other schools not using it, it can be used for parks and rec, it could be used for travel ball, or just whatever.
I think it's worth investigating, for sure.
I would just like to get a price of what it would cost, and, and I did talk to the chair of the school board, and he's all for it, and if we could get a price on that, then we could have a discussion with the school board and make sure they're on board with it.
So do we need to, I think that's a good idea, but do we need to, is that something that we can do? Or is that something we need approval from the school, their property?
I think what we could do, I think what I heard you ask is if we could get foresight design that's working on the project in Riner to take a look, and if there's consensus on that, then we would reach out to the superintendent and say the board gave consensus to this, is that okay with the schools, and then go from there.
Yeah, I mean, he done told me that he was for it, you know, and if, if we could get that design company to look at it, maybe you can talk to superintendent tomorrow or something, and, you know, we're not asking schools to pay nothing, I just, we'd just like to get a price to see what it would cost to do it.
Are you thinking that that could be like the home of Auburn Middle School's baseball team? I think that would be great.
I mean, like some of the school people told me, they like to see people walk, and they can walk straight over to this field, and like I said, it's already got dugouts and everything.
And we have a school liaison meeting next week, next Monday.
Yes, ma'am.
Do y'all think Craig could talk about it?
Yeah, consensus, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Okay, really, I'll try to do it really fast. First of all, Craig and Steve, thanks for remembering Jim, you know, I served with him the whole time that he was on the board, and he was someone that we're really gonna miss. And then I just wanted to report that last Monday, I went to the Blacksburg High School Community Meeting, where they talked about all the different things that the kids were exposed to, and it was sort of, it was very informative, I hope maybe next year they can get even more folks to come. Then Tuesday, Sherry and I went to the Farm Bureau Dinner, which was nice and well attended. And then I went to the Western Virginia Regional Jail meeting for Steve, and Craig was honored with a beautiful framed, sort of a collection of different things from there, but what were, what was really impressive, the words that they said about you, and so that was really good, Angie was there, too. And then.
They did give me a get out of jail free card if I ever needed it.
Yeah, and then, then that same day, Craig and Angie came to the Blacksburg Rotary Club and gave this really good, it was a great presentation, in fact, we could take that, and it would be something you could even go in your community and use, to talk about local government, and it was very well received. So I wanted to thank them for doing that, and then, did you want to talk about the picnic?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, just wanted to, it was a beautiful day down in Creed Fields for the employee picnic, and congratulations to our Employment Engagement Committee for all that they do to keep our employees engaged, and it was a fun time for everyone. And then Mary and I today presented the proclamation for, to the Planning Department, to Ms. Bree, for Planning, for Planning Month, and so we just want to.
From the board.
From the board, to extend our appreciation and gratitude and thanks.
And don't forget, Steve was at the picnic, too.
Steve was at the picnic, too.
And Craig was there with his grandson.
Had a good time. First time I've ever opened an event with prayer with a three-year-old latched my leg, but it.
And just to remind everyone of Operation Green Light, that will be the same night of the board meeting, October the 23rd, which will be Mr. Meadows' last board meeting, unless, unless we decide not to let him go. With that, we stand adjourned, thank you all.
Thanks.
And it's only 12:20.